Ladies and gentlemen, let's go ahead and get started. Before we go to our first committee, I did want to remind everyone that this is a committee meeting. No final decision will be made on the bill addressing the rezoning north of New Carlisle. So just so you know that, it's a committee meeting. The committee will make a recommendation to the full council, and our next council meeting will be the vote that will decide if the rezoning passes or does not pass. Okay? With that said, we'll go to Budget and Administration Committee Chairperson, Mr. Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number 84-25J, an appropriation in the amount of $640,426, is before us from Department 0002 Auditor.
Kathy Gregorich, our Property Tax Division Director, will make the presentation.
My name is Kathy Gregorich from the St. Joe County Auditor's Office. I'm the Property Tax Director, and we just wanted to kind of update you on the homestead audit that we're doing through TMA based on...
Ms. Gingrich?
Yes.
Could I have you please pull the microphone just for recording?
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, this is an update of our TMA audit that we're doing for our homestead deductions. Based on the collections that we've received over the last three months, we're estimating that we're going to collect a little over $666,000. We have $666,765 that we're going to collect as ineligible homestead reimbursement from taxpayers that have had that deduction that were not entitled to it. Those were identified by TMA, and TMA's contract says that we pay them 40% of that amount that we collect, which would be the $266,706. And the statute about ineligible homestead says that after we have collected those monies, paid out the expenses, the auditor's office can keep $100,000 in their non-reverting fund. So that would leave a balance of $373,720 that we're estimating will be transferred to the County General Fund at the end of the year. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Does anybody...
Mr. Pickman? Thank you. Kathy, does that... Do you go back two years, one year, or just... How far do you go back?
We go back two... The current year plus two prior.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions from the committee?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes, Mr. Katanzer.
Not on our committee, would you entertain a question?
Absolutely.
Ms. Gregorich, thank you for that information. It's very helpful. Can you remind people in the audience what the requirement is to establish that you are entitled to a homestead credit? How much time you have to live in your residence?
Well, it has to be your primary residence. So it's not really a time restraint or a time limit. It has to be your primary residence. And things that we use to prove that are your federal tax return, what address do you use? You know, where do you get your license plates? Where are you registered to vote? It has to be your primary residence, and then you're entitled to the homestead deduction.
Thank you. Someone in the assessor's office once told me that it was a requirement you live in your home six months and one day per year at least.
No, there's no...
That's not true.
There's no time requirement at all.
So I'll let the assessor know he wasn't correct.
Okay.
If somebody wanted to report that somebody's not living in their primary residence but entitled... But getting a homestead credit, who would they report that to?
They report that to our office, the Property Tax Division. They report that. We do a little investigating, and then we'll send out a letter to that taxpayer to let them know that we've been made aware that this is not their primary residence and to reach out to us if that's not true and to give us that evidence. Otherwise, we will bill them and send them a letter to tell them how much they owe us.
Sounds good. Thank you. I get quite a few calls from constituents that live in my area, which there happens to be a lot of Airbnbs and VRBOs that get rented out primarily in that fashion but are not somebody's primary residence, but the people are claiming homestead exemptions. I'll make sure we refer them to your department. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have those referrals. I mean, people do notify us about those things.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I did have one, perhaps a final question. The fee to TMA, that's just a one-time fee based on the initial recovery. That's not a continuing basis.
Yes.
Correct.
Just one time.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One question.
Yes.
Did you say that was based on the amount that you collected, right? Not the total necessarily?
Right. We collected a little over $330,000 the last three months. So we're assuming we're going to collect about that much the last three months of the year. That's how we came up with our estimate.
Thank you. If that's all, then I will entertain a motion.
Motion to send favorably.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to send favorably. All those on the committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Mr. President, Bill number 84-25J moves forward to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Then we have Bill number 84-25K, transfer of $30,000, Department 0040, Human Resources.
Good evening. Selena Carr, Human Resources Director, seventh floor of this building. We are requesting a lit fund transfer of $30,000 from the postage fund over to unemployment. We've encountered a number of, I'll call them uncontested reduction in workforce in 2025. Housekeeping Department was one of the first departments that we encountered. I think there were anywhere from 15 to 20 employees who were released from our workforce, uncontested claims. The Health Department, we encountered about 12 eliminations due to budgetary cuts from the state as well as adult protective services. So a little high. We're at $90,000 to date. So that... And that is a little high for us, but it's one of those line items that it's hard to predict depending on how the year goes. So we have a request for that same amount for next year, but again, it depends on how things go with budgetary cuts and reductions in workforce.
Any questions for the petitioner? I have one. I understand how unemployment insurance works and payouts. My understanding is outside of the Health Department situation that for the Cleaning Department and others mentioned that job opportunities were offered to those individuals from the private institution that took over cleaning, et cetera. Would that not have mitigated much of the unemployment costs that the county would have absorbed?
Potentially. If those folks did not apply for unemployment, yes. Yes. The other thing I work with John Murphy on is something we may want to consider is whenever there's an election year, we have to keep in mind that at the beginning of the year there may be uncontested cuts and reduction in workforce due to changes in administration and elected officials.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions for the petitioner? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to send favorably.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Am I on that committee? Yeah. Second. Yeah, you are.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. President, Bill number 84-25K sends to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. We move on to Engineering and Transportation Committee Chairwoman Shabazz.
Bill number 84-25A, transfer of $241,500, Department 00700620064IPG.
Thank you. Sky Matters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor of the County City Building. This is the time of year where I'm typically looking where we have budget surpluses and where we have, looks like there might be some shortfalls. And most of the time, those shortfalls, when it comes to the highway side of things, are in our equipment and services for our equipment. And so what these transfers are is just areas where we are... We have a surplus and projecting that will remain a surplus to help cover some areas where we are projecting potentially shortfalls. I'd be happy to answer any questions about any particular item.
Are there any questions?
So I'm looking to transfer from... And there's a half dozen different categories here. I see Group Five, Group Three, and Group Two, and they're all listed as hourly. Can you just describe what that is a little bit?
Sure. Those are the different groups that we have in the Highway Department per our collective bargaining agreement. And the money that is left over there is either from that position being vacant for a while, or sometimes the... Like, say, a person in Group Three may have to work out of group as a mechanic. So then they no longer get the Group Three pay, they get the mechanic pay. But for the most part, it's those positions that we are trying to fill, or it just hasn't been filled yet. Typically, you know, there's been several times this year where we were fully staffed. There's been others where we might be three or four people down. A lot of times, you might get someone that comes in, and after two weeks, they decide that it's not for them, and they move on. So... But there were a few times this year we were completely staffed, but that leftover is what, from the times we weren't completely staffed for that group. Does that make sense? I'm sorry if it long-winded.
No, thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
First, Sky, I wanted to say that the Cleveland Road Roundabout looks fantastic. Excellent job there. Getting lots of compliments on that. I'm sure you are, too.
Good, yeah. I wish I could take credit for that, but I didn't do most of the work. But it helped get the project through. But yeah, it's very much needed, and I think everyone in that area, too, will be very happy once we get the Douglas Bittersweet Roundabout completed also. That is supposed to be bid next year, so...
Okay. I did want to ask you, one of the things I often hear about, and this might be a little bit off-topic considering this bill, but I see weed spray there. We've got $12,000 that we're going to use to move over to help with these other accounts. I do hear once in a while about, why can't we get... Do a better job with the weeds along the guardrails, that kind of thing. Once in a while, I hear about a roundabout or two that have been around for a while, and why can't we do a better job manicuring those? You know, we've asked each department to run a pretty tight ship over the last few years, especially next year. And I don't expect an answer now, but I think it's something we need to think about is, how can we do a better job, you know, making those areas look better? So...
Well, I can... If you don't mind, I can...
Oh, go ahead. Please.
The bridge railing issue, that's something that I'm working on to address to try and get that taken care of. A lot of times, when our people mowing come in, they get focused on just mowing the roadside right away, and sometimes that gets forgotten. So that's something I'm working on. As far as the roundabouts, that's a situation where a lot of times, those end up getting taken care of. It's just not taken care of at the level of service that the constituents would like. We... I have a crew of highway people, and I can guarantee you that we do as much as possible with the people we have. And this situation, though, is... South Bend has people in their Parks Department, landscapers, taking care of their roundabout centers and so forth. We've got guys that are used to just going in with big equipment and, you know, hurrying up and getting out. So those roundabouts, we try to make sure the grass is cut. They could look better if there was other avenues to take care of them, but, you know, we try to make sure that we clear... Sometimes there's sightlines that, you know, I try to go out and check that myself occasionally to make sure the sightlines are fine. But sometimes, I mean, they do get overgrown or forgotten, and in those cases, you know, we rely on residents, give us a call, and we try and get out there and do it. But if, you know, if you're looking for a situation where we have flowers and statues and everything else, that's not something our highway would... I would not want... I love our guys and gals to death. I wouldn't want them maintaining that.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Not on your committee. Since Dan brought it up, Mr. Matters, Ironwood Underpass, the planters there, who maintains those? You know, we divide the city of South Bend, Emissary Walker, right there, but we built the underpass, but those planters are overgrown.
That is a situation where we maintain those, and given our current manpower, we usually get to those once or twice a year.
Okay.
But we maintain those. And there's other bits of property that were never transferred over in that area, too, that we take care of, so...
All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Do I have a motion on Bill number 84-25A?
Motion to send favorably.
Second.
All right. Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 84-25... Bill number 84-25A is... Moves on favorably. Bill number 84-25B, appropriate $914,313.60 to Department 0069006000620023IPG.
There's several different reasons for the appropriations going on here. The first is I'm wanting to get to appropriate more money into the cumulative bridge fund, which we do have that cash on hand because the Mayflower of our Ardmore Bridge, construction was supposed to go into next year, but they're actually opening that up within another week or so. I believe another week or so. I can't remember exactly, but... So it happened faster, so I want to make sure that we have the money appropriated to pay the contractor if they bill us before the end of the year. Whereas it did go faster than we thought, because originally, I was thinking it would be in 2026, and I budgeted for it there. But that's the reason for the appropriation to 1135. 1169, during the Douglas Road Project, Douglas from Ivy to State Road 23, part of that, we ended up relocating a city force main, and the city paid us back for that. And we're finally getting to the, you know, finaling those things out and getting the paperwork done. So what that is, is I wanted to take the money that we got paid from the city, which was the portion of the money, $348,433.60, put it in our LRSAs special projects so we can use that for some guard rail repair or some other types of special projects. And calcium chloride, the 1176, that's our salt, and I usually transfer out of that fund. And so it's at a negative right now, but what usually happens, too, is we let... There's other people that get salt from us, and then we keep track of that, and we bill them. Penn does, New Carlisle does, I believe... I believe New Carlisle does. Some of the other schools in the area. And so I'm taking that $35,880 that we got back from those people in appropriating it into that calcium chloride fund where it typically is at. And then the last two is from our low hut, 4923, the wheel tax. There's a... We ended up purchasing more road signs this year than we typically do. A lot of that ended up being because of the amount of no truck signs and everything else that we've had to put up, mainly over in the IEC area. But there's been a... This year, there was a lot of sign replacement that we typically don't have to do, but we've got cash in that account to appropriate $30,000 more dollars into that. And then this administration item, that's what is used to help supplement our MVH. And I think I have enough, and I don't want to... We don't want to end the year MVH is not having cash in it. So this gives me some leeway in case we get later on in December and need to get some cash into that account so it doesn't end the year negative. Long-winded answer. Long-winded discussion. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I'm not on your committee, but can I...
Absolutely.
Unrelated, Sky. Sorry. IEC, I know we've talked about this a lot. Do you have any site on down the road on when we get the funding, when you have a plan to fix those roads out there? I mean, I know it's a vague question, but... And you get hammered by that all the time, but I know we've talked a lot about it.
If we were to have the funding, I'd get to that as soon as weather and contractor availability would allow. I mean, it's... It doesn't take us long to... We've got a good system in place to get the contract documents together so it can be bid. But once we were to get the money, it really would depend on the season in which we get it and the contractor availability.
So if the funding comes through, you could react pretty quickly.
Yeah. I mean, if we were to get funding today, we probably wouldn't be able to get anything done this year because of just... We're going to get into the time where you can't place asphalt here fairly quickly. And plus, I cut my salt budget this year, so it's going to snow like crazy. So... But it could be a situation where we're set and ready to go as soon as the weather breaks and they're allowed to pave.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Do I have a motion on Bill number 84-25B?
Motion to send favorably.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Bill 84-25B moves to the full council favorably.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Sutzel.
Thank you, Councilwoman Shabazz. We move on to Human Services Criminal Justice Committee, Councilwoman Hess.
Mr. Shetzel, Bill number 84-25C, an appropriation from the Prosecutor's Office in the amount of $35,306.33. Mr. Reisenhofer?
Bob Reisenhofer, I'm with the Prosecutor's Office. Office is on the 10th floor of this building. We're here tonight to ask for a transfer of funds from one fund to another. This is from the Department of Corrections' pretrial services that the prosecutor administers. Department of Corrections came through last year, and they require us to put each grant for each year into separate funds. So what we do is we put, on even numbers, even number of years, it goes into one fund, and then on odd, it goes into a separate one. That was taken care of, except we forgot one thing, is we need to combine those. Ending balance goes into the beginning balance of the other one. It's just a transfer from one of... There's no change in monies, it's just a little housekeeping. And it's for $35,306.33.
Okay, any questions?
This is for the pretrial diversion that the prosecutor does for Department of Corrections.
Any council questions, Mr. Reisenhofer?
Just quick, the Auditor's Office agrees with that description.
We do, yeah. We did this with Ducom Center, and we're doing it with the Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to send favorably.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moves to the full council with a favorable recommendation, and I think Mr. Reisenhofer has one more salary amendment in the 85-25D in the amount of $6,141.04.
This is to move money from the IPAC grant that we get to hire part-time students at Notre Dame to do as the cyber crimes. This is paid through a grant, and we pay it in advance. Notre Dame reimburses us for that then in the amount of $6,141. They've already paid that. It's sitting in miscellaneous receipts, and this is something we started this past year.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Yes, Mr. Shetzel.
I just have a quick question. The front...
It's the FICA portion.
Oh, okay. Question answered.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from council? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to send favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moves to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you, Mr. Reisenhofer.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bill number 84-25E, an appropriation request from the probate... Or no, Superior Court in the amount of $25,000.
Good evening. Jennifer Barhite, St. Joseph County Superior Court Administrator, office in 101 South Maine, basement. We are asking for an additional appropriation of $25,000 be added to our court mandate fund as our increases for mental health evaluation and court interpreters has risen significantly in the past year and continues to do so. At this time, we are currently out of funds in that line item, and I have in-line transferred all the money I can, and my best guess estimate was we are going to need about $25,000 more to get us through the end of the year to be able to cover those state mandate court costs.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council?
Is that unfunded, or how is that looking, John?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
It's pretty common. It's a... We have a budget for it, but we just need more money in that budget. We originally budgeted for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to send favorable.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moves to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have an appropriation request from adult probation for $25,633.90, 84-25F.
Good evening. Jesse Carlton, Chief Probation Officer with St. Joseph County Adult Probation, office is located on the 4th floor of the County City Building. This request is much in line with Mr. Reisenhofer's request as well. The DOC came through and completed an audit, and this is just a clerical cleanup of those funds to make sure that they are correctly appropriated for the beginning balance.
Okay, thank you. Is there... Are there any questions for Mr. Carlton? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion to send favorable. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moves to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you. The next is 84-25G, an appropriation from the probate court in the amount of $75,000. 84-25G, thank you.
Good evening. Kristin Cooper, I'm the Controller for the St. Joseph Probate Court located at 1,000 South Michigan Street. I am here to request the appropriation of $75,000 into the contractual services account in Fund 9124. These funds were received earlier this year from the Indiana Supreme Court from the VASIA Grant to be used for the real services adult guardianship program. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Does council have any questions for the petitioner? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion to send favorable.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moves to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you. Next, we have the Police Department, 84-25H, a transfer of $225,000.
Good evening. Steve Noonan, St. Joe County Police Department. This is a representative transfer from the food budget in the lit to the medical portion of the lit to help with the shortfall in the medical that we generally see every year. One positive out of this is that the food, new food vendor we are using has become much more reasonable and have been able to better control costs than the previous one.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Noonan? Mr. Shetzel?
Officer Noonan, so congratulations on the new food vendor. That's awesome that you're saving that kind of money. How did we budget food and medical for next year?
We are a little... We probably will have a surplus in food next year because we did budget... Unfortunately, we... I didn't want to base it off just a couple of months with the new company, but now we're looking... but now we're looking at six months, and I think we're going to be, we're going to have a surplus again next year based on what we've seen the last few months. Medical, we did, we did go to another vendor, a new vendor, and I think we're going to have more solid numbers from this company. They're a company out of Carmel, Indiana. We've only had them for a month, but so far, we've been very happy with them. They actually cover about 70% of the jails in the state of Indiana and are pretty much concentrated in the state of Indiana.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion is sent favorably.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moves to the full council with a favorable recommendation. And Officer Noonan is back, an appropriation of a hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. Bill number eighty-four twenty-five I.
This represents a appropriation from the mental health levy. There's a portion of that that goes for psychotropic drugs that are used in the jail. They're given to inmates, prescribed to inmates. We generally come back every year for this, and this will offset the medical costs that we've already come out of the medical budget to pay for those prescriptions throughout the year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Officer Noonan? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion is sent favorable.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moves to the full council with a favorable recommendation. And next, I have Bill number eighty-six twenty-five, salary amendment for the probate court.
Good evening, I'm Laura Zappia with the Probate Court and Juvenile Justice Center at 1,000 South Michigan Street. We have a couple of amendments that Attorney James Masters will present to the council.
You notice they didn't have to move the mic. Good evening, it's my privilege to speak on behalf of Judge Zappia this evening. James Masters, Nemeth Feeny Masters and Cam P D., 350 Columbia Street, South Bend. There are two transfers being requested here. One is for the position of judicial referee that's funded through 4D. That person is going to be given additional responsibilities to hear cases like Chin's cases, which are children in need of services, and other cases that are not 4D cases. And the funding for that would be from the general fund. According to the auditor's office, council approval is required because we're paying one position from two separate sources. Again, we're adding additional responsibilities to that. The 4D judicial referee currently is funded at two and a half to three days a week, and so this person will be doing an additional two days a week for the extra compensation. The other is, is the other judicial referee that's part-time for two and a half to three days a week, and that person is going to be given additional responsibilities as a senior advisor to the judge. And we're asking to transfer an additional twenty thousand dollars from the general fund to supplement that salary for the additional two days per week of work. There's no increase in the number of employees, and the funds are in the general fund, but again, will require council approval because one position's being paid from two separate sources. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them. Okay. I'm standing corrected. It's not a transfer of funds, it's just paying the, paying the salaries from those sources, that is, the general fund.
Okay, thank you for the correction. Any questions for Mr. Masters or Judge Zappia?
Sorry, I'm not on your committee, Ms. Hess. Judge or Mr. Masters, so, hearing what you're saying, the judicial referee, the first one on this budget amendment is paid at seventy-eight thousand, but you said they'll have additional responsibilities. What will the additional compensation be for that judicial referee?
If you're looking at the one that is on the, I suppose, left side of the Form A, that's twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay. So, twenty-four thousand.
And, and that's to do additional work as a juvenile referee.
Right.
And then the one, the reference on the right side of Form A is to add twenty thousand dollars for an additional position as advisor to the judge.
Gotcha. So, will there be a probate court referee at thirty-eight thousand dollars? Or a senior advisor at fifty-eight thousand? Will those be eliminated, those?
Right now, those positions are vacant.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Motion is sent favorable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moves to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Bill number eighty-one twenty-five, code book amendments for massage establishments. Petitioner, the Health Department.
Hello, Brianna McCall, interim Director of Environmental Health for the St. Joe County Department of Health located on the 8th and 9th floors of this building. So, we would like to make the amendments before you to Chapter 113 for massage establishments, basically just to better protect the health and safety of St. Joe County residents and to make human trafficking, to make it more complicated or make it more difficult for human trafficking to take place within these establishments.
Okay, any questions about this proposed ordinance? Mr. Tantz, right?
You used the word complicated. So, we have existing massage establishments and massage therapy, even at medical facilities. Is it going to make it more complicated for the law-abiding ones?
So, we have actually had a lot of conversations with different massage establishments throughout the county, and the feedback was pretty good. People who are already abiding by these things, it's not going to be an issue for them to just provide the proof of that. They have to apply every year anyways and have an annual inspection. So, it's not really complicating it more for them, it's just complicating it for those who are potentially involved in some lesser appreciated practices.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Councilwoman Hess. Just a couple of the highlights for the good of the public. One of those requirements is that people may not reside and live at these establishments, correct?
Correct.
And that's happening at some of the salacious locations.
Sure, yeah.
Another requirement is that the licensed professional who's under the permit has to be present anytime there's an inspection, which has been kind of a frequent violation by those.
Correct. And I don't want to give away too much, but we do find sometimes, you know, there has to be a licensed practitioner on the, at the establishment. And sometimes people will maybe say they're the licensed person at four or five facilities, so it's obvious that that cannot be true. So, we're just trying to make sure that somebody there is a licensed massage therapist.
And those, that may be a person who's identified that they're the licensed therapist at one location in our county, but in four other locations out of the county. So, we, we're none the wiser of that, except for the inspections, correct?
Yes.
And this also increases the fines and penalties and closures and revocation of permits, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
I love hearing all those things. I really appreciate the effort that the Health Department's put in to strengthening these regulations.
Thank you. Our team's worked very hard, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sutzel?
Just a couple of quick questions. First of all, we are not allowing current organizations to grandfather themselves out of any of these new rules, are we?
No.
Okay. And then, secondly, how are we going to enforce these rules?
So, like I said, every year, they have to apply. So, every year, we do an annual inspection, so they have an inspection sheet that lists many of the things, or pretty much all the things you see in the ordinance. We are also requiring them to receive a copy of the new ordinance, so they are aware of changes and sign that they understand what is being asked of them that's different than before. And when they apply, they will have to provide a lot of the details that you see here. But again, most of the establishments are already doing those practices. We are just documenting that that is being done.
Thank you. And then, lastly, I just want to, again, I'll echo Mr. Tanner. Thank you to the Health Department for this, because at least one time, and possibly more than once in my district, this has been an issue.
Yes.
And I think we do need tighter regulations. So, thank you.
I do appreciate it.
Any other, yes?
Just a quick, how many are there, how many massage establishments do we have within the county that you are?
So, it changes every now and then, because sometimes some will close, and then they open up, and it's the same one, just in a different location or with a different name. I believe the last I saw, there was about eighty. It was either there were eighty establishments or eighty licensed therapists, but I believe it was eighty. I'll have to double-check with the team and make that more concrete for the next council meeting.
Thank you. And I just echo them. I think you guys put a lot of work into this to make sure that we're, the right things are happening. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, that eighty to eighty-five number of establishments includes legitimate or?
Correct.
Establishments as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ray.
Can you talk about how often, I guess my questions go together, but how often these places are closed? And my understanding is that they usually can turn around fast because they pay the fine. And if you could talk about how the fine structure has changed?
So, great question. I have to be honest, I'm a little unfamiliar with how frequently this does occur. It happens frequently enough that we feel it's necessary to make it more complicated for them to just reopen or pay the fee and get back to it. Because I believe before, we would find a certain amount of violations, and they would get, I don't remember the exact dollar amount for the fee, but it wasn't enough to discourage them from continuing the practices that we're getting repeat complaints for. So, now, we feel that the fee is high enough that it will discourage them from engaging with anything, or at least make it more complicated to open back up within an immediate amount of time. And I think that our authority in it is that we are the Health Department, so our job is to protect public health. You know, so we do work with the police, but we are not the police, so we do our best to collaborate with them and make it so that these practices are ceasing.
Do you know, I mean, I can look it up, but do you know what the fine changed?
Let me look at it.
Or how it changed?
If it's okay with you, I will get back to you on that. I will look at that before the next meeting if you choose to vote favorably, because I don't.
It's not in our packet either, so.
Yeah.
If you could just let us know.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I do apologize. Sorry about that.
Did you send, just send us all an email?
Sure.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Rotten.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a little bit more about the, if anybody's living. So, so a massage establishment, that is a commercial use?
Correct.
Okay. And if I remember correctly, the ordinance allows for one dwelling unit, one residential dwelling unit per commercial property. Is this targeting basically undoing that, or is this trying to address something else?
This is trying to address something else. So, because our knowledge of whether or not these people are living there consensually or against their will is not known to us at the time, we're just trying to make it safer so that people aren't being forced to live there. A lot of times, we see that maybe people's like IDs have been taken, like their cell phones, things like that. And so, if they are living there, we want it to be at least evident or provable that it's a consensual living arrangement. But, our code is hoping that they will not be, we will not be allowing them to live at the facility.
So, the, this new code would supersede the land zoning code that allows for one residential dwelling unit?
I'll have to look into that.
Okay. Yeah, because my, I guess my question is, you know, we're trying to prevent somebody living there where they shouldn't be, where they're legally not allowed to be, especially if they're underage. But if they do have a right to live there, I think, you know, we need to understand how that works with the rest of the county ordinance.
And I will say anecdotally, that the living arrangements that we see within these establishments aren't one unit. It would be like multiple beds in a not confined area. So, the evidence that we see is different.
Okay, yeah. I would agree, so. Thank you.
And I think, Mr. Tantz, right?
Again, I'm sorry, I'm not on your committee. That's a great point, Mr. Rotten. I don't know if Sean Klein could add to that, since he's here in the audience. If there's a conflict between the zoning ordinance and the massage establishment ordinance. But, my question for you, Ms. McCall, is, so are medical facilities that offer medical massage also considered a massage establishment, such as like, I'll throw out a name, SBO that offers medical massage or chiropractic office?
It's kind of hairy. So, we don't require a license if you are within a medical facility.
So, they're not required to be licensed?
Correct, yeah. We would maybe sometimes get like a complaint here and there, but it's almost never that we would have to go out.
This is your freestanding massage establishment only?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
We can discuss that interplay a little more. I mean, quite honestly, the number of commercial buildings that have an accessory dwelling unit in the county, I think are fairly limited anyway, and, I mean, the, the danger might outweigh the opportunity in terms of allowing them accessory to this specific use, but we can kind of discuss that. A little more, make sure that our approaches are consistent there.
Any other questions?
How, I mean, how often do you go and inspect? I mean, it's, you have a routine for every facility?
Correct. So, we will do an annual inspection. So, once a year, every establishment has an inspection done, but that is aside from any complaints we receive. So, if they do, if we do receive a complaint, we will go out additionally. So, at least once a year.
So, similar to like a restaurant?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion is sent favorably.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moves to the full council with a favorable recommendation, and you'll get back to us with the answer to that.
Thank you.
And that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hess. We move on to Land Use Planning Committee. Councilman Tantz, right? As we have before us, Bill forty-two twenty-five, a rezoning of agricultural land out on Spruce Road, Walnut Road, Chicago Trail, New Carlisle. The petitioner is Randy and Betty Saporsky and Mallow Manor LLC.
This is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission Director, with offices on the 11th floor of this building. As you're all aware, this is a petition to rezone approximately 1,000 acres on the south side of Chicago Trail between Timothy and Spruce from A Agricultural District to I Industrial to allow for a proposed data center use. The rezoning area is comprised of several parcels, many of which contain large, currently agricultural fields as well as agricultural buildings, and it appears there are at least two existing or former single-family homes within that rezoning area. As you can see, it is to the north of New Carlisle. At its closest point, it's approximately a third mile to the north of the town limits. This is the current site viewed from Spruce Road. Again, from Spruce Road. Road. Again, from Spruce Road. This is Chicago Trail, where it meets Spruce Road. And then from Chicago Trail, and from Walnut Road. And then these are homes outside the rezoning area on the east side of Walnut Road. If you look at the future land use map of the St. Joseph County Comprehensive Plan, this area does call for intensive agricultural use. However, I will mention that when you look at the economic development priority areas, the southernmost portion of this does fall within the Area One New Carlyle Economic Development Priority Area. Similarly, this rezoning is inconsistent with Recommendation FP1A, which is Preserve Highly Productive Agricultural Areas. However, it would appear to advance Recommendation ED3A to encourage opportunities for business expansion and attraction that focus on job creation and tax-based growth. Although it's wholly without, outside of the town of New Carlyle, on their recently adopted comprehensive plan, they do contemplate future agro heritage tourism near Timothy Road and Chicago Trail. And the remainder of this rezoning site would fall under their rural management character area. This comes to you with an unfavorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission by a vote of seven to zero. Just a quick summary of the public hearing. At the public hearing, three spoke in favor of the rezoning, while thirty-three spoke in remonstrance. In terms of written statements received prior to the hearing, we received one in favor. We did receive an additional six in favor, right as the meeting started. And in remonstrance prior to the APC hearing, we received one hundred and forty-three in remonstrance. Beyond that, I don't really have much in a way of an update since last month. I believe you all received a resolution from the town of New Carlyle, where they expressed their opposition to the proposed rezoning. And just by way of timeline, I want to make sure that everyone's aware that as this was certified by the Area Plan Commission on September sixteenth, per the state statute, the county council must make a final action on that within ninety days of that date. This would mean that in terms of the regularly scheduled county council public hearings, this would need to be acted on by December ninth. If it's not acted upon, it would automatically be denied based on the recommendation of the Area Plan Commission. Beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Klein? Mr. Schutzler?
Mr. Klein, could you email the second to last slide that you showed there to all of us, please? That one, yes.
This one?
Yes, that one.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then, you mentioned that the southern portion is actually within the IEC, is that what you said?
It's not within the IEC, I apologize. It's in what's shown as an economic development priority area in the new comprehensive plan.
And then, what percentage of the total property is that portion?
Just as a rough estimate, probably around ten percent.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Klein? If not, we'll move on to the petitioner. I have a question for you, Mr. Klein. If you refer back to your overview of the proposed area...
Sure.
Is there a portion that's not being shown up there that's on wintergreen, or no? That's not contiguous to this?
I believe the petitioner will kind of speak to that, but that's not part of the current rezoning area now.
Thank you. Petitioner here.
Good evening. For the record, Brandon Dickinson. I represent the petitioners for the rezone petition here in front of the council. And actually, Jerry Saporsky, who is one of the main petitioners, who owns the majority of the land, is here tonight and has requested to make a few comments for the council's consideration.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening. Randall Saporsky, fifty-two, five-oh-five, Spruce Road, New Carlyle, Indiana.
Yes, Mr. Saporsky.
Well, I've had these people, I've had more than one call, and I've done some, I've had many meetings with these people. And I felt they had a lot of respect for our neighborhood. The way they want to set back the timeline of building. And then purchasing some of my land and donating it to the city as some green space where it would protect the town on the east side of town. There's three hundred acre, two hundred of mine, and, or no, one hundred and forty and a hundred, excuse me, and a hundred of another parcel. That would be, as I understand, what could turn into green space, you know, trees and what have you. This is a very fortunate thing for me in a way. Farming has been very tough for the last four years, ever since COVID. Things were good then, and ever since then, it's been, equipment, fertilizer has just skyrocketed, and grain prices have fallen to some of the lowest levels in a long time. And I'm seventy, seventy-one years old, and I'm getting tired. And this is a great, I thought, a great offer to me with, with knowing their intentions. And they're, and when we had the last meeting, they were just, and I've had people, I'm sorry, I'm not a great speaker, maybe at times, kind of nervous here.
You're doing fine.
You know, and I've had many people in the neighborhood wish me well, and, and for our family. And, and then, backing up then, I was going to say, you know, at the last meeting, there was some people that spoke here. You know, there was one gentleman that stood here and talked about how he loved his land and didn't want to see us as a neighbor change, but at the same token, he's the one that asked and received zoning on seventy acres, I believe, for housing, right at the end of Spruce Road. So, our, you know, progress, that's what this country has always been about, is progress. And it's hard, and you can't stop, you know? When I started farming fifty-two years ago with my father, three hundred acres was a lot of work. Today, we're farming three thousand with my two boys, and making less with a lot of work, you know? I'm getting tired of working sixty hours a week and, or more. And, and it's just, I've just felt like I've had more, more comments of good than bad. And I think, I think the town has to realize what, what a great gift this company wants to give them to the east side of town. I don't understand why that's not a thought.
Are there anyone that has a question for Mr. Saporsky from the council? Any council members?
You know, I'd like to make a comment. I appreciate you coming here. You are the property owner, okay? And you have rights for your property, okay?
Well, that's what I always believed, that when you work thirty, make thirty years of mortgage payments, and you come home with a deed.
Yes.
That at the end of your life, you're able to do what you want to do with it.
Yep.
Maybe within reason, but this is, I think this is, what they're offering is very reasonable.
And I, you know, appreciate the lifetime of farming that you've brought to our community, okay? This is a tricky issue, and I think we all know this, that balancing individual property right with community zoning rights, okay? But I do want to say that I appreciate that you are here and speaking on behalf of this.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for Mr. Saporsky? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Thomas.
But I just want to echo it, Mr. Saporsky. I have never met you, and I, you're very professional, very nice. I hope you can understand the community's angst over this, especially in light of what's happened, you know, the last year and a half, all the massive growth out there. And it's, I hope you can understand that. And you've been very nice to come out here, and I appreciate you coming out here and talking to us. And Brandon, you've been professional too, so it's not personal. But it's very, the community obviously is very nervous of what's happened late, and now this comes upon us. And you can understand that just, the classic line, can't we let the dust settle? And so that's where the, I think that's where the frustration is. It just happened so fast, right behind with Amazon and General Motors. But thanks for coming out, we appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. Catanzer. Mr. Saporsky, just a couple things that maybe you're the lone person who could answer this because of your history with the property, but over, over your history of this land, what all has been farmed on this cropland? Has it predominantly been corn? Has it been rotational?
Basically, corn and soybeans.
Okay. On an every-other-year rotation, or more, one more than the other?
No, we're, we're on a fifty-fifty rotation.
And is this land irrigated?
It is now, yes. Yes, over the years, we've irrigated it. Because without irrigation, it's very poor soil.
And by estimate, how many years has it been irrigated?
Twenty, thirty, I got some pivots in thirty years.
Okay, so decades.
Where I live is twenty, twenty-two years.
Okay. And then, on the property itself, there are some high-power transmission lines that crisscross it?
That's correct.
Roughly, what's the history of how long that utility, that infrastructure's been in place?
One power line was rebuilt last, oh, time goes by, five years ago, and it was built in nineteen twenty-seven. Some of the others are mid-sixties, some were maybe in the fifties, fifty-four, I thought I read in the deed on one line.
So upwards of fifty years for either one of them?
Yes, yes.
Appreciate the context for that. Again, uniquely qualified to provide that.
And I think that's partially why they're, why they're there. They have a lot of options for power.
With, in a, any, this is probably going to vary every single year, depending on the crop, depending on yield, depending on what other consultants are probably telling you for seed and suppliers. But approximately, how much do you spend on supplements, fertilizer, herbicides, things of that nature, would you expect?
Probably about four hundred and fifty, five hundred dollars an acre is, is raw cost, plus the, plus the cost of the land.
Yeah, okay. Again, I think you're the sole person who is uniquely qualified to answer some of those questions that we probably wouldn't be able to ask anybody else, but...
And that's partially why it's, the costers have gone so drastic. And, and then on one farm that I'm still making farm payments on, you know, the, the interest costs are at five hundred dollars an acre. So I've got a thousand dollars an acre in some of that land. And now with three fifty corn, it doesn't, we don't make anything, we're, no, we're in trouble.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Saporsky?
Yeah, can I ask one more question here?
Sure.
Is there a drainage ditch that runs through the middle of this property?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Is there any water in it right now?
I don't think so.
Okay. When, how often throughout the year is there water in that ditch?
If we have a lot of rain, the ditch can carry a lot of water because Hudson Lake drains into it. They, and I think conservation people control that drain. Right now, Hudson Lake is very, very low, so they got the valve shut, so there's nothing in the ditch. It's not used for drainage, so-called for our area. We have all very droughty soil. Water table maybe twenty feet down, but, but it's not high enough to, to need it, you know, to need a ditch.
So, so some...
In the seventies, that ditch was farmed. Some, some farmers were farming through it. And then when Hudson Lake needed a place to drain their water and flood, they redubbed the ditch in the, in the mid-seventies.
Yeah, so I know you might not be a drainage expert, but you're given your experience in the property. So some drainage ditches, especially in more urban areas, tend to take surface runoff during rainfall. But when you get out into rural areas, the drainage ditches can actually help to lower the water table so that areas can be farmed. Is that the case for this property?
No, no. This ditch could be, could be...
Could be?
It could be plugged, and it wouldn't change any drainage across this whole area. The only people, the only thing it would affect is La Porte County with Hudson Lake, if the, if we get the rains to bring the lake back. We just haven't had any good rain for over a year, you know?
Yep, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner, Mr. Saporsky? Hearing none, and we'll move on to the, Mr. Dickinson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saporsky.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Brandon Dickinson, Dentons, Bingham Greenbaum, having offices on Ten West Market, downtown Indianapolis. This is the presentation, for the most part, that was provided at Area Plan Commission. And I'd like to just move through it at a somewhat accelerated rate, answer any questions as they come up. And then, also, would like to share some thoughts related to some of the concerns that we have heard and responded to, based on our conversations with neighbors in the area, the town of New Carlyle, and some of the comments that were made at the Area Plan Commission. The rezone for the property, which is approximately 1,050 acres, is shown here on the vicinity plan, bounded by Timothy, Chicago Trail, Spruce. And again, this is a little bit north of twenty. There is another piece of land that was mentioned. It is not part of the rezone, so to avoid any type of confusion, I've removed it from the slideshow so that no one believes that part of the petition is to rezone 250 acres directly next to the town of New Carlyle. What we have said is that we believe that that land, the 250 acres that Mr. Saporsky mentioned that are adjacent to the town, are probably better, better off in the hands of community partners. And so if the project were to move forward, the full expectation is to transfer that 250 acres over to a civic entity that can then do what it feels is, is best with that land, whether that be green space or buffering or whatnot. Moving on, the project is, project is proposed in two phases. There's a delineation of three areas here. The area two, the northeast, is approximately 250 acres. You'll notice that it is not contained within Phase One or Phase Two, because that 250 acres would not be part of the development. That is 250 acres of pure farm buffer from the project. Phase One is in the center of the area, shown here on the rezone map. And then Phase Two would probably come on the heels of Phase One, finishing up. The Phase One area is... The Phase One area is ready to go in the sense that the energy and capacity to provide Phase One's project is available basically today even on top of Amazon's usage in the area. So there is capacity for Phase One today. This is not a speculative development where the project is hoping that there's energy three years down the road. We are coming here today because in our discussions with the utilities, this energy and this capacity is available to be served as soon as the project could be built. And we anticipate that would, that would probably take place approximately 18 months after approval of the project rezone. One of the main things that we heard when we were talking to folks that live in the area, and admittedly, we did not talk to every single person in the town, nor did we talk to every single person in the area. But we did talk to the most impacted folks that were in the area that we did talk to. And one of the number-one comments was, we see the Amazon project, and I've measured this, it's approximately 125 feet from the curb to the front of the building out there on the highway. And the comment was that feels a little intimidating to have that, those buildings that close to the road. If this project were to move forward, we would want to see significant, a significant amount of buffering setbacks that industrial developments do not typically do, especially in rural areas. And so what you see here in this green area, the, the closest distance from an edge of a building to Chicago Road or Chicago Trail is just under 500 feet. So again, for context, Amazon sits 125 feet from the road today. The closest any building would be to Chicago Trail would be almost 500 feet. As you move along Chicago Trail, the setbacks push back even farther to 750 feet, 1,000 feet. And the furthermost, the, the southwesterly most point of the building there on Phase One would be approximately 1,200 feet from the road. These are massive setbacks. For the record, the county setback for industrial is 50 feet. So we are talking exponentially more setback than it is required by the county's own ordinance. And we would want to see that move forward as a commitment in our work with the county to provide written commitments that are legally binding on the development so that the promises made as part of the rezoning process are held and transferred, excuse me, are held and transferred and run with the land for all of time in perpetuity. You see that there are eight shells here on Phase One. And the orange areas in the middle are the power energy substation and switching station. The other comment that we heard a lot of was these, what people have called the graveyard or the, the, the power yards are often near the roads. And the neighbors had said they would want them as far as possible from the roads so that they could almost hopefully be not even visible because they're not very sightly. So with that, intentionally, the switching station, the substation are placed in the middle of the rezone project area behind the shells. And it's highly likely that they will not be visible at all from Chicago Trail. The other thing that I will mention, since Randy brought it up, you see the, you see that yellow line and significant red lines running through the project. Those are existing, those are existing power transmission lines and infrastructure. Some of this infrastructure is coming up on 100 years of being in this location. When we talk about projects bringing costs to communities, this is one of the biggest misinformation, misnomers that, that is being circulated. The comment that because a development like this data center comes to town, everyone's going to see their electric bills skyrocket because the property owners, the property owners...
Excuse me, sir. Folks, this gentleman has the floor. No one else is to speak while he has the floor. Continue.
The, the complaint is that electric bills will go up if a project like this comes into town. And while that would be true if none of this infrastructure was out here today, the problem is the bills of our grandparents and great-grandparents that lived out here in the 20s, 30s, 40s, and 50s, and 60s, and 70s, they are the ones who paid for this infrastructure to go in. This infrastructure exists today. It has been out here for 50 years. It is available. It is not new, and no costs are being passed on to any type of users for this project. In fact, the Indiana General Assembly recently passed a law that for developments like this, the developer has to put up 80% of the total project cost as bond collateral so that if the project does not move forward, that the energy company can't turn around and put those lost and sunk costs on its ratepayers. So 80% of a project like this, I will just say, has a lot of zeros in it. And so that is another way that taxpayers and ratepayers are protected. One of the other comments that we often hear is, well, the electric company and this data center, they can just raise our rates to whatever they want it to be. It's also not true. Indiana is regulated by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. And anytime there is a rate increase by any type of utility, water, power, or otherwise, it has to go through a stringent process down at the State House where the rate is evaluated, it is debated, and only upon a showing of cause is a rate allowed to be increased. So again, that is not how any of this works, but we have heard that that is one of the main reasons people are not in support of it. So I call this out because I think it is important to know that this is not new infrastructure. And any infrastructure that the developer needs out at the project to make the project work are 100% on the developer. At no point are any of those costs legally in the state of Indiana allowed to be put back on ratepayers and people in the area. So that is Phase One. And this was an aerial rendering just to try to show scope of Phase One and where it relates in, where it is relative to the, to the other roads and homes and whatnot out in the area. And this is the same Phase One from the northwest. And then Phase Two, you'll see these rectangles, as I mentioned before, what we call the shell buildings. This is what people are usually referring to when they talk about the Amazon data center buildings. You'll notice that there are six. This project has a total of 14 shells. The project and the developer are also fully prepared to put into written commitments with the county that if a developer at any time tries to increase the number of data center shells from 14 to some other number, it would require the express consent of St. Joseph County Council. So St. Joseph County Council would have the end say on whether any more data centers, buildings could be built. This was done in response to the concern that people had with Amazon that they thought it was one number and then it became another number. And so trying to put safeguards here so that people understand what we say we're going to do is what we are going to do. And if there is a change in that direction, it will not be, it will not be done without the express explicit and written consent and approval of their elected officials. Again, the switch yard is tucked there, or the substation is tucked there again. And the distance between this last building and the road again is approximately, I believe it's approximately 1,200 feet. So again, massive setbacks for the project. We would also put all of those setbacks in written commitments to the county as well. An aerial rendering of both phases shown from the southeast and the northwest. So again, a completed site plan is 14 shells on more than 1,000 acres with substantial agro-green space setbacks, landscaping, birmingham. That was that green area that you saw along Chicago Trail. That was another thing that the developer wants to work with county planning on is deciding what type of trees, what species of trees, berms, whatever we can do to make this section of Chicago Trail as visually pleasing as you go down it with the setbacks and the berms and try to have the visual of the buildings and the project be as close to nonexistent as possible. Building elevations, these are pretty standard, again, about 60 feet. That's what you see out at the Amazon building. Again, I mentioned the landscaping, working with county planning to come up with a landscaping plan that involves native plants, trees, et cetera. Materials also open to mixed-use materials and facades so that there is, if it is visible from the road, that it is not some sort of monolithic sheet metal cover or concrete facade, that it has character and a break in the visual appearances. Again, exterior lighting, this was brought up at Area Plan Commission. All of the lighting would be downward facing. One of the concerns is light pollution and there being a significant amount of light going up and out into neighboring areas. The exterior lighting in the site plan would basically be limited to just the parking lot and the building at a minimum level for employee safety. And we would also run all of these, their lumens, standards, et cetera, photo metrics through county planning as well to come up with an optimal lighting plan. Exterior security fencing, it is a data center. It is, it will need to be secure. One of the other commitments that the developer is offering to make is instead of putting these type of fences out along Chicago Trail and on the property line, these would be tucked away from the road and be as tailored to the parking lot and building development site as possible so that no one will even probably see the fences. Or they will be, again, of a character and magnitude that's not very significant. So again, trying to be creative and trying to make what I will say, what I'll describe as kind of upgrades as you, as you might have it along the real property and real estate for the development. A couple of things that came up at the Area Plan Commission that I wanted to mention. First and foremost, I made a misstatement and I apologize for that. There was a comment that I made that our development, excuse me, our development engineering group had provided the water needs for the project to the town and the town was aware of those numbers. I actually had it backwards. We were given the town's capacity as it relates to, or I'm sorry, the, the water utility's capacity as it relates to what they have available and what the project would need. And so in our review and, and our engineering review with Kim Lee Horn, we knew on our side of it that we would not be taking anything close to a capacity that would cause any type of detrimental impact to the water capacity at the project, or I'm sorry, water capacity at the water utility. One of the other things that the developer is, is putting on the table and willing to negotiate with the county is a closed-loop system. So for those who are... For those who are not familiar with what a closed-loop system is, it is a system where, I'll use the analogy of a pool. You fill a pool with water once, and then we would normally heat our swimming pool to keep the water warm, but in this case would be cooling the water. The water would run through a, a cooling system and then be processed back into the pool. It wouldn't be running a garden hose constantly 24/7 all the time. You would empty the pool and you would change that out here and there. But the amount of water usage in a closed-loop system is exponentially lower than an open-loop. And I believe most people are familiar with open-loop because that is what Amazon has at its current site here in the county. So this would not be an Amazon water similar project. It would be a closed-loop project if the project were to receive favorable rezoning, which we think is a positive for the town and the county because that water that could have been used in our project could now be used elsewhere for the town's needs and other development needs in the area. So it's mutually beneficial for us to run the system this way for various reasons. And it also is beneficial to the city and the town. The other item that was brought up at Area Plan Commission was a number of people stated that the comprehensive plan does not allow for this project. And I want to take a few moments to speak about comprehensive plans because I think there is a disconnect between what they are and what they are not. A comprehensive plan is a guiding policy document. It is not a binding regulatory code. If, if you look at the actual plan that the county passed, there's a number of quotes that I think are important to keep in mind and frame as we talk about whether simply looking at a map on one page and what color it is means that nothing other than that can go there. Plan SJC expressly states that the plan serves as a guide and resources for decision-making rather than the decision itself. It does not dictate site-specific land use decisions. Plan SJC does not make the actual decisions and should not be the only guidance documents the county uses to make decisions. Instead, it's intended to inform day-to-day decisions, provide broad goals, and be treated as a living document that is reviewed annually and periodically updated. No one, I, I would say that no one in this room three years ago anticipated data centers would start popping up in this part of Indiana. But due to the electrical infrastructure that was put in during the 20s, 40s, 50s, 60s, and 70s in between Chicago and South Bend, there is an asset out there that is the envy of just about every county in Indiana that would die to have a project of the magnitudes that St. Joseph County is getting. Unfortunately, they don't have the electrical capacity or infrastructure to make those projects viable. And so I mention that because the comprehensive plan is not meant to be made and then for it to sit on a shelf and dictate what should be done over the next four, five, six, seven, eight years. A comment was made that we just finished it and we spent a lot of money on it. So we're, I guess we're throwing it out the window if we don't do exactly what it says. That's not an accurate depiction of how a pro, a comprehensive plan should be used either. Comprehensive plans should be reviewed by all entities annually as it reacts to a number of changing factors in the local economy, local development, community, and county needs. And then just to finish up, there was the other comment that the agro, I believe it was called Agro Heritage Area, is what is called for and is what should go there, speaking to the 1,000 acres approximately. I wanted to mention that the Future Land Use Map is idealized development direction and likely the most frequently consulted work product. And that the plan cautions it should be quote, "reviewed and updated," end quote, as conditions change. I would say a $13 billion... I would say a thirteen billion dollar development happening a number of miles down the road is grounds for taking a step back, looking at what was done even a year ago and saying, if we have the infrastructure, if we have all of these things in place, that development can happen here, we shouldn't be shutting the door on anything that is not available to be developed currently. One of the other items that was discussed was the location to the IEC. A number of people have failed to mention that this site is literally adjacent to the IEC. While it is not specifically in the IEC core, it is adjacent to the IEC. One of the other things that the comprehensive plan discusses is the expansion of existing uses into adjacent lands. So if we have the IEC directly adjacent to this site with fifty years' worth of electrical infrastructure sitting there unused, waiting to be used, it's already paid for, it's already present, then developing where utilities and infrastructure already exist adjacent to complementary uses is called out for specifically in the comprehensive plan as intelligent and thoughtful design. So statements that the comprehensive plan does not agree with this development is oversimplifying what the comprehensive plan is. There's a reason it's almost two hundred pages long and not just one map on one page. There's a lot that goes into it. There are a lot of policy considerations. I'll also mention that one of the policy considerations that all elected officials in Indiana are currently reviewing is the tax revenue implications of Senate Enrolled Act One. For those of you in the crowd that aren't familiar with it, there is going to be a significant reduction in government tax revenues as it relates specifically to business personal property. Industrialized counties like St. Joseph County stand to lose the most tax revenue because of this. When it's time to make budgets, hard decisions will have to be made. And one of the decisions is to cut staffing, lower public safety employment, or increase revenue. You have two choices. You have to either cut spending or increase revenue. The other thing that Senate Enrolled Act One has been discussed as a policy perspective from the governor's office and others supporting Senate Enrolled Act One is local government has the opportunity to raise its local option income tax if it needs to make up for those dollars that are being lost due to Senate Enrolled Act One. So I would say, and I have confirmed this with a number of financial consultants in the state of Indiana, voting down a data center is a vote to increase taxes down the line because some way, somehow, those tax dollars are going to have to be made up. And either projects like this can pay the tax dollars and keep the budgets afloat and continue to operate communities like St. Joseph County and the efficient and high-end rate that it is, or there will have to be difficult decisions where jobs are cut and resources are not as available due to this reduction in tax revenue. So I propose that allowing these projects, allowing this project to move forward is an opportunity for a taxpayer like this development to take the tax burden that the county is going to face over the next five, ten, fifteen years and help put the county in a better position than probably any other county in the state of Indiana, given that it already has the Amazon project. I will say the Amazon project happened and was negotiated prior to Senate Enrolled Act One, so it's not exactly apples to apples. This would be the first data center development post-Senate Enrolled Act One. But it does put St. Joseph County in a position enviable by ninety-one other counties that do not have multiple data center projects. So I think that's another consideration that is outlined in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does contemplate economic development, tax impacts, and other moving and constantly changing factors is reasons why the comprehensive plan map on a certain page is not to dictate what land use should be, what land use is best and appropriate. It is simply one of many considerations. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Mr. Schutzel.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for keeping your comments while Mr. Dickinson spoke. I understand for many in this room, this is a emotional issue. It's probably the most important issue in your lives right now. So I appreciate the fact that you've been able to hold your comments. We will listen to every one of you at our next meeting, which is, I believe, the second Wednesday of next month. We will listen to every one of you. If we have to sit here until after midnight to listen to every one of you speak, we will do that. We have done that in the past. So you will have your time to speak to this council. I want to make sure you understand that, okay? Mr. Dickinson, you explained that the power company has told you, I don't remember your exact words, but it came over to me as everything's going to be okay. Could you be a little more specific as to how they're going to provide the power required for this data center, given the other power requirements that our county is going to have as these projects ramp up?
Yeah, I can speak more generally to that as I'm not an electrical engineer. But the, the grid and St. Joseph County is very uniquely positioned here where you are actually in between two interconnection, interconnection managing systems. There is the MISO grid, which most of Indiana is on. And then there is the PJ, PJM grid, which is associated with Indiana, Michigan, and AES, whereas the MISO grid is associated with NIPSCO, which is just down the road. But because St. Joseph County is between these two grids, they can easily send power to one grid or the other. And so there is a capacity opportunity, as we mentioned, given the infrastructure that has been put here in place in Western St. Joseph County, where the, I believe I've read in the paper from a spokesperson from Indiana, Michigan that the utility can and is ready to serve this project. It is not mutually exclusive to the Amazon project. It is just one of the reasons, one of the many reasons why Western St. Joseph County is so popular for these projects because it's there. The energy is there, the infrastructure is there. I've made the analogy, it's like plugging into an outlet. When you plug into the outlet, it lights up. It's there. For the last fifty years, the utility company has been spending money and putting infrastructure over there so that when somebody does want to plug into it, the light goes on. And that's, that's why they, the utility is prepared and ready to serve this project, both in Phase One and we anticipate in Phase Two. And I would not be surprised if there continues to be other projects in the greater northwest, north-central Indiana area for these exact same reasons.
Mr. Schutzel.
And I know Mr. Dickinson may not be aware of it, but we all did get an email from Jill Schitano from AEP. I do see her sitting in the audience. I don't know if you would want to hear what AEP's
Sure.
if that's advisable, but I see, did I say your name correctly, Schitano? What is it?
Shikatano.
Shit?
Shikatano.
I'll let you say it.
Yeah.
Can you please say your name and address?
Think of a shik razor, shik razor, Shikatano.
Say your name and address for the record.
Jill Shikatano, Economic and Business Development Manager with Indiana, Michigan Power, then address of sixty-four eighty Adams Road in South Bend.
We did get your email and thanks for sending that to help clarify some of that.
Yeah, no, that's great. I think from our perspective, happy to share any, answer any questions that you have from the information I shared or that you have about this rezoning request in particular as it relates to power.
Mr. Dickinson alluded to earlier was that AEP made a commitment that, or the Indiana Legislature made a commitment that the, I'm guessing it's a bonding requirement of the developer requires them to put up eighty percent
So, so in November of twenty, so in November of twenty twenty-four, Indiana, Michigan Power filed a joint settlement with sort of some diverse stakeholders for, that was approved by the IURC, which established a large load tariff. And so there are some components under that tariff that is designed to ensure some enhanced protections for all customers and also supports our ability to serve large load customers. So one of the components under that tariff, it does put a minimum charge on a contracted capacity for a large load customer. And so what that ensures is that it's an eighty percent minimum billing demand. So that ensures regardless of whether or not the project uses that, we are going to bill them for that and they're going to pay for that. So that just puts some protections in place.
Does anything get passed on to, let's say, a residential ratepayer?
No, and I think that's one of the
Protection for a residential ratepayer?
Yeah, and I think that's one of the trends that we're seeing right now. We have two hyperscale data center projects within the Indiana, Michigan Power footprint. And what we're seeing is that the revenue generated from these data centers is allowing us to allocate that cost back into the cost of infrastructure, which allows us the ability to mitigate any of those financial burdens that residential or commercial customers would otherwise experience.
So the infrastructure required to support large load users is paid for by the large load users and not passed on to, let's say, a residential or small business ratepayer?
Yeah, so any revenue from these data centers is being put back in into the infrastructure requirements needed to serve these customers. And that's one of the, we are one of the first utilities that put a tariff like this in place. We actually are, believe this is going to be a best practice. We are getting calls and anticipate others that are going to start modeling a structure similar to this as well. One of the, a couple other parameters under that large load tariff, it does extend the large load customers to extend the contract commitment. So it's a longer-term contract. There are also exit and penalty, penalty fees. So if, which is another protection for existing customers or all customers. So should a large load customer decide to vacate the premises or close the facility prematurely, or if they have a decreased electrical requirement, they have exit and penalty fees. So some of those stranded costs aren't passed on to the rest of the customer base.
That's helpful. That's helpful to know that. Anybody else have questions for Ms. Ms. Schitano? Ms. Drake, Mrs. Drake.
Do you have the capacity built and in place now to deal with all the data centers that we have now and this one that wants to come in?
So we do have capacity to serve all economic development projects and we take maintaining a safe and reliable grid very seriously. So any requirements that we are provided for people that want to operate within our service territory. So we will take the requirements, study them. We will analyze the impacts across the system and develop a plan of service. And that plan of service will, will include a plan that is safe and reliable and it limits any impacts without compromising customers. And so we do have some significant infrastructure in place. It's one of the things that's drawing attention certainly to this region because of the infrastructure that we have in place and certainly the high voltage transmission infrastructure. But when it comes to a specific, a specific project plan, we'll study that and we'll determine what those parameters are. There's just a lot, this is a very dynamic nature of what's happening right here. Things are moving very fast. And so there are developments that are happening every day. And so we have to constantly re-study and retake a look at the impacts across the entire system. Oftentimes, it may require additional network or additional system improvements before we can serve an additional load. So it's very fluid in terms of what we need to do to be able to serve these customers. And we're very intentional about the process that we take as we work through this because we are, we are obligated to serve too. So we are legally required to provide electricity, but it has to be in a safe and reliable manner without compromising our existing customers.
So, so maybe I didn't quite understand your answer, but it sounds like you don't necessarily have it all in place, but you will study it and put it in place.
So for this particular project?
For this one and the one that we already have, the AWS one and the one that they're planned for granted.
Yeah, so we have the capacity, we have the generation to support it. For this project specifically, I don't have full project scope parameters, so we haven't ran a full system impact study on that yet. But we do have significant infrastructure in place and we know we can provide them at least their initial service requirements.
You have other questions? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. Katanis. Right. You've talked quite a bit and the email informed quite a bit about transmission and service and the infrastructure that's in place to, to do that, that INM provides. Also realize that we reside within the PJM market and on that cusp of that, of that MISO market. One of my broader understandings of the marketplace for the grid in that market is that it's the purchased power of generation that may be driving up prices. We haven't really heard that word, "generation," being used. Does AEP and Indiana, Michigan Electric generate enough power for this? Or is there going to be additional demand and market bidding to provide additional generation for this?
Yeah, so Indiana, Michigan Power is a fully integrated electric utility. So then we own, operate, maintain our own generation, transmission, and distribution. And so we do have our own generation resources. And we look to, and we are looking to grow that portfolio base too with purchasing. And we do go out on the market and purchase additional power too. So we anticipate to support future needs, to purchase additional wind resources, natural gases in our future. And we are also in strategic conversations on the nuclear front, thinking about SMR development. I know that's certainly a priority for AEP leadership too. So we have the capacity to serve everything within our integrated resource, source plan in our portfolio. And then we are taking proactive measures to acquire additional generation to support the growing demands.
And, and within that realm, this is going to toe into a neighboring county and a concern that's been raised over there. But hydroelectricity across the St. Joseph River, AEP at least controls some dams. I don't know how many of them may be hydroelectric in nature, but I know it's concern to our, our neighbors to the east in Elkhart County about the continuing operation of at least the dam in that area. And, and the reason I bring it up is, is the broader point that I think you made in the email that somewhere around eighty percent of the power generated was from non-emission-related power generation?
So I think of the energy that, of the energy that we delivered in twenty twenty-four was eighty-four percent emissions-free. So the makeup of our generation portfolio right now, fifty percent, about fifty-two percent is nuclear, thirty-five percent is coal, and about the eleven percent, the rest of that one hundred percent, so the eleven percent is made up of our renewables, which is a combination of hydro, wind, and solar.
Thank you. I think that's all I had.
Yeah, that, that number threw me when I saw that in the email. I was like, well, eighty-four percent is non-emission?
Is, is eighty-four percent emission-free.
Emission-free?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the questions for Ms. Schitano? Joe, Mr. Thomas?
Are you currently, is Amazon currently a large load user?
Yes.
So you currently
Well, AWS, the AWS data center.
AWS, right. General Motors also? How do the residents know that? I mean, it's just like, when you read your bill, I mean, there's no way to knowing. How often does Indiana Regulatory Commission meet? When do they raise the rates? I mean, it's a, it's kind of this, I don't know, it maybe takes more homework on our part, but it just seems like it's hard to find.
Yeah, hard to find who is the electric provider.
Well, who's the electric provider? And how do we know our, I'm trusting your face value here. How do we know it's accurate? When you see on a piece of paper, I think it's a little more reliable.
Yeah, yeah. So I think the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission posts a lot of public data. So I think they post a lot of information on there about rates, any open rate cases, any filings. Everything is open and you can find that on there. AEP and Indiana, Michigan Power also has a pretty robust website. I mean, we are happy to be wherever we can to help educate people on who we serve and where we serve. The last rate base case that we filed was in twenty twenty-three. I think they approved it in early twenty twenty-four, so customers may have seen some type of increase. The increase was about three point six percent. And then the IURC also does comparison. So you can see how our rates and our any increases that we file or get approved, how they compare to other utilities across the state of Indiana. In that last case, so our increase was about three percent. All the other utilities was anywhere from twelve to twenty-six percent. So we try to be as diligent as we can and trying to make, you know, electric affordable for all of our customers.
Is there a simple website to go to?
Yeah, just look up the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission.
Okay.
Or indiamichiganpower.com. I'm happy to send you a link to some of this information as well after. And I'll also send you a link to some of the, the tariff book, which will outline some of this information for you as well.
Are data centers your largest user?
Data centers are a large user, yes.
Can't say the largest though. They're one of your top?
They are one of our top, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I've been reading in the news that Palisades up in Michigan, that they had a nuclear power plant that had been decommissioned but had recently been reopened. Does that provide for more generation in St. Joe County?
So the grid is all very interconnected. So I think any new generation coming online will certainly impact capacity availability across the entire network. And I'm sure, and St. Joe County will reap the benefits of that.
Okay. And so this project would probably be a multi-year construction project. But I'm just curious, what are the, what are the, the electric bills look like today in the, the New Carlisle area? Because I've been reading news stories that elsewhere in northern Indiana, that electrical rates are going up and I didn't see it, you know, paired with any new development. So where are rates currently going in the New Carlisle area?
So I, I will have to, I, I'm not as close to that. So I, I'll have to go back and just kind of research that with our team. I can certainly pull an analysis to show that. I don't have any, I don't believe we have any indication that customer bills in New Carlisle have increased because of the new developments in that area. In fact, we're seeing the revenue from these data centers as having a moderating effect on rates. And we anticipate it has the opportunity to, potential to even reduce rates over time because of the revenue that we're experiencing from these large load projects. Any, any growth is good regardless if it's large load or, or data center. So any, any growth coming online is, is good overall for all of our customers.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hess?
I just had a quick question. You mentioned that data centers is one of the largest users. Can you identify the other large users? And are there any that are larger than data centers?
So there are a couple sectors in the data mining space, which are large energy users. There, we don't have one in St. Joseph County, but there is one in our service territory.
Okay, thank you.
You have other questions for Ms. Schicktonal? Mr. Schutzle?
Thank you. I don't think this, actually this question's for Mr. Dickinson, so I'll wait.
Okay. Piggybacking on Ms. Hess's question on large load users, none of our existing industrial companies, IINTECH, IINCO, Cleveland Cliffs, Aim General, they don't, they're not large load users or they are?
So when you think about those customers that fall under like the large load, that would be the large load that would fall under the provisions of the large load tariff, there is a 70 megawatt is the minimum there. And so currently, I don't believe they meet that, meet the minimum provisions.
70 megawatt?
70 megawatt is the, really the threshold to be considered a large load customer.
Okay.
And that's 70 megawatts of electricity, not, not other forms of energy generation?
It's their contracted capacity, their electric demand.
Since Amazon's gotten started, sorry, Mark, go ahead. Can you explain any, some of the half dozen or so power outages in the New Carlisle area when those buildings get started up the past few months?
Can you say that again?
Can you explain about a half dozen or so power outages that New Carlisle's experienced since Amazon has fired up the last few months?
So Amazon went into, so the first phase of their project went into, was, the first phase was energized in January. So I'm, I'm, I'll have to go back and, and look with our team because I'm not aware of any consistent outages as a, as a result of, of this development.
How about-
You're saying there are over 10?
About six.
Oh, six.
How about brownouts? I know I put you on the spot, can you, I mean-
That is also something I haven't heard about. I think that's one of the things that, in a lot of these projects, it's a phased approach to how they're increasing their energy demand. And so we have protections and controls in place, which all, all focus on grid reliability. So there are, this is monitored and controlled across every phase. And so I, I will have to get back to you on a brownout because that isn't something that, and we would have heard about that, at least on the economic development team. And I may ask you some more questions about that too in our, our follow-up, just to kind of get a better understanding, so I can respond appropriately.
Ms. Schicktonal, just to clarify, AEP supplies power to these, these new proposed large load users that we have in the industrial area. Is that supplied by the town of New Carlisle or do they have their own electric utility themselves?
So there are some municipalities that do have, that do supply electric utilities. We have a large part of at least that area. So there may be some pockets where a municipal or our town might serve electric loads. But if it's in our service area where these large projects, proposed projects are, we would be the retail provider-
Okay.
-for that service.
I would like to say, an unfortunate squirrel met his fate in my backyard a couple days ago, but I do appreciate INM's quick response to get my service back and my family.
Oh, I'll let our lineman know because we-
They were quick.
Often hear about a lot of things, interruptions because of wildlife.
Yeah, it was very helpful. I don't, is Jared Huss here in the crowd or not? No? Okay. I didn't know if the town of New Carlisle had a representative from utilities that could answer that question. But any other questions for Ms. Schicktonal before I get back to Mr. Dickinson? Seeing none, thank you for your input. It was helpful.
Thank you.
I think you probably did a better job explaining the power thing than Mr. Dickinson. So it's good to have an expert here.
Yes. Subject matter experts are definitely a good thing to have on these type of conversations.
Mr. Dickinson concluded his presentation. Are there questions for him? Mr. Schutzle?
Mr. Dickinson, you showed us how this project was going to be different from the Amazon project with the setbacks, et cetera. Are there other projects your company has developed with similar attributes?
From, to my knowledge, this is, and Mr. Suporsky kind of talked to this, this is, and he had a number of other developers' data centers that came and laid out what they thought this would look like. And it does not look like what we've shown you. The, the developer has taken a very intentional design approach in the wake of the concerns, complaints, in the wake of, of the existing data center. And I would say that because of Amazon and all the lessons that were learned, this site and site plan is very unique to St. Joseph County and Indiana. Our hope is that, you know, to take a step back, so the Amazon project exists and, and not, not making any comments that it's not a good project. What I'm saying is, the Amazon project exists and right now that's the standard of what a data, data center development looks like in northern Indiana, because it's there. This project is trying to raise the bar and set a new standard for what these type of industrial development should look like going forward in rural St. Joseph County and we hope in other parts of northern Indiana. This is a chance to set a higher expectation of industrial users that says, just because you're an industrial user doesn't mean your site has to look like an industrial user site. You should be contemplating setbacks, landscaping, and significant design and development standards for your development, regardless of whether you're commercial or industrial. So that is the hope and it is my understanding that we don't have any other projects in the country that are this, that are this well delineated in the site plan that you're seeing.
Okay, thank you. And then one more thing. You mentioned the SB one and the personal property tax deductions. And personal property tax, and just for anyone who isn't clear on that, is a actual business tax on the equipment a business has in its facility. But SB one is more than that. It's also a reduction in our property taxes as taxpayers here in the state of Indiana, the taxes on our homes, which is something we all applaud, right? There are a lot of people are very concerned about their property taxes, our property taxes as the price of homes have increased, as their assessed values have increased, our taxes have increased significantly. And so we as a council have had to, and every county is having to adjust, as you said, to this new reality. But I, I kind of want to take the edge off of what seemed like a do or die situation. We have already approved three large projects, which are going to be paying taxes to this county. And those projects should help to fill that gap that we're going to see as we as homeowners see our property taxes drop. So, you know, I just don't buy the argument that we need this in order to fill the gap in the tax revenue we're going to get in two or three years. We have approved three large projects that will be paying millions of dollars in taxes and we should be able to fill the gap with those projects in my mind. So I don't buy that argument. And I certainly don't buy the-
Can I ask, just a quick follow-up question?
Let me finish. And I certainly don't buy the argument that we would have to raise local income taxes in a couple of years when we would actually have the opportunity to do that. I don't buy that argument either. I don't think we will have to do that. And this is certainly one person who would not vote for that. So I'll let you go ahead and respond.
Well, I guess, part of the problem is we're all in a wait and see approach with Senate Enrolled Act One. The Department of Local Government Finance, this was passed obviously back in the spring. They still haven't provided the state any type of guidance or direction on what a new floor will be. And again, with this depreciation floor and simple numbers, previously if you had $1,000 worth of a machine and you put it into service, no matter how many years it was in service and no matter how much you depreciated it, you were always going to be assessed $300 on that $1,000 piece of equipment due to that 30% floor. That's gone now due to Senate Enrolled Act One. And so now this equipment can theoretically be depreciated down to zero. And so on industrial machinery, these are millions and millions and tens of millions of dollars of assessed value that are just going to be gone. I've also seen reports that some counties are going to lose up to 80% of their industrial business personal property tax because a lot of companies are going to fall under the $2 million cap that the state also passed. So if you have less than $2 million in business personal property tax, pretty soon you're going to get to pay $0 in personal business property tax, even though you were previously paying those years ago. So the future remains to be seen. I, I, I would agree that I hope that it doesn't require raising taxes, but this is the challenge that, you know, municipalities across the state have. There is a direct correlation between services and taxes and everyone wants to live in a great community that has a high quality of life, that has a low tax rate. The way that you do that traditionally in Indiana is you have high assessed values. Because when you have higher assessed value as a county, traditionally, your tax rate goes down as a county. So when a project to the tune of a couple of $13 billion projects now opens up in St. Joseph County, that is a, that is a windfall of assessed value that's going to now come into the county that now will depress everyone's relative tax rates. So the approval of the project helps lower tax rates in that aspect as well.
I understand that, Mr. Dickinson. As you explained, I think everyone on this council understands that. We've had to learn what SB one is going to do. And I would respond by simply saying, we've already approved a project of that magnitude and we should see those tax revenues coming in. We have approved the Microsoft project, which is a smaller project, and the GM project. So I'm just, I, until proven differently, and maybe we have to wait to see what the state numbers are, I just don't think that argument holds water at this point.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Ms. Hess, you had a question?
Well, yeah, maybe a couple now.
Absolutely. Let's get them answered if we can.
Let me start by saying, you know, my understanding is what I'm hearing from our financial consultants in the auditor's office, that we still might be looking at a $1 million at least shortfall in 2028.
What number did you say?
Eight million.
Okay. Eight million.
Yeah, eight million in, in 2028. That, that these projects that have been approved may not help. So I don't know, I, maybe John can correct me on that number. I don't know. Or maybe Mr. Shalyo can speak to that. But in addition, I know you alluded to, you were alluding to some community benefits that would accompany this project. But is there any way you can like list those out separately to say exactly what you're committed to doing in the community should the zoning get passed?
Yeah, maybe, maybe I could ask a follow-up question to clarify. Are you speaking to the development standards and commitments that would be part of the zoning? Or are you talking about other community benefits like investing in local STEM education for schools and those type of things?
All of the above.
Okay. So the latter i- is a little more kind of to be determined. That's definitely something that is going to be on the table. I would, I would say this, in, in looking at what Amazon has done in those categories, I would anticipate this developer would be aligned at minimum those same levels of community investment. So there's that. As it relates to the development standards, a couple of the development standards that we talked about today, we would be willing to offer, one, putting the setbacks into a written commitment with St. Joseph County. We would also, looking at the Microsoft project, and I, I know it's kind of back online, so maybe this isn't as big of a concern, but there was a concern at one point that since the Microsoft project had been rezoned industrial, if Microsoft didn't come in, then anything industrial could just walk in because now it was zoned industrial and there could be a slaughterhouse now. So one of the other things that we saw as an opportunity to, to kind of guard against those fears is the rezoning commitment would actually list the specific uses that are and are not allowed. So it would basically be data center. And we would list out all of the uses that are not allowed, so that if, God forbid, the project did not come to fruition, this downzoning would prevent anything coming into this land that's just been rezoned, that I'll, I'll use the phrase, that, that the county didn't bargain for. The county is, is, you know, bargaining for a data center, it should get a data center. If a data center doesn't go there, then no industrial use should go there other than what the county then feels comfortable at a later date agreeing to. So we would put that in a written commitment to the county downzoning this 1,000 acres. We would also dedicate the 250 acres to a civic entity. That land is directly adjacent to the town of New Carlisle. And then I believe we showed it, it was that area that's not in either Phase One or Phase Two, that that would be, that would remain green space agricultural buffer. So we would put all of those items into the rezoning commitments as well as any type of landscaping, birmingham tree, shrub, bush, lighting, fencing, design, elements, materials, et cetera, that the county would like to see. We would put all of those in writing and those would run with the land, so that even if a new developer came in, they would inherit all of those same restrictions and would have to follow it. It doesn't go away just because one company sells the land or sells the project to somebody else. Those would continue in perpetuity to give the county a safeguard that all of those commitments would be met. And I'm sure that we can probably think of a couple others. That's not an exhaustive list, but those are the things that we have discussed in conver- conversations, that we are, you know, today, ready to put into writing and agree to, and would welcome any other suggestions that county planning may have, that they would like to see as part of the development as well, from a development standard perspective.
And of the thousand acres that is being, you're asking for, that's being asked to be rezoned, how much of that would be devoted to the data center shells?
Yeah, I think the estimate that we've used is, is about four hundred and fifty-ish acres. So more than half of the one thousand fifty acres would remain ag slash green space.
That's for Phase One and Phase Two?
Yes, that's, that's for both phases.
Mark, do you have a question?
You're done, Ms. Hess?
No, I think that's all for him.
Go ahead, Joe.
We haven't talked about noise on these data centers. Can you elaborate?
An open-ended question, Counselor. So I will say that the county has, it is my understanding, the county has a noise ordinance. And usually that means that a development, a site, building, whatever, cannot exceed a certain decibel level. Whatever the county's noise ordinance is, this project will meet. The other thing that we've mentioned is that, due to the way that, the way that the site is, is set back, the noise onsite and the noise at the edge of the property, a thousand feet away, are going to be two very different numbers. So we would anticipate that whatever the noise decibel is at the edge of property is going to be well below whatever the county's decibel sound ordinance is, due to landscaping, birmingham, and spatial separation.
You had experience with this before in other projects with noise being a problem?
I would say that it is a topic that came to light based on other developments and concerns, that questions were asked about, are these things going to be train whistles and running in the middle of the night and whatnot? And so we've, we've looked at the ordinances for St. Joseph County related to sound, and don't believe that the project would be in violation of that. And obviously, if it was in violation, there would be police powers that the county has to enforce against a noise ordinance being violated by exceeding the industrial decibel limit.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for Mr. Dickinson? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. Katanzer. This may be a better question for the engineers, and I believe there's a representative-
Yeah, we have Kim Lee Horn.
So feel free to defer.
I'm going to defer right now.
Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Sure. Andy Deane, I'm a civil engineer with Kim Lee Horn. Our local office is nine hundred ninety-first street down in Indianapolis.
Andy who?
Andrew Deane.
Deane?
Yes.
E-E-N-E-E-N?
You got it?
Okay.
Thank you. We've talked a lot, or really it was presented to us, about the buffer and the setback and the potential landscaping that would be in place, and the opportunity for the county to still provide input on what that landscaping could consist of. But there's a lot of space between the buildings and around the interior of the site. There also appears to be substantial, like there would be on any kind of site development with impervious pavement, some retention or detention basins on the site to handle the drainage on the site. We also heard from Mr. Saporsky earlier that the ditch isn't really a part of the drainage infrastructure, as it existed historically, nor is it being used, from what I saw in the graphics, for drainage on this proposed site development. But the, the ground itself has fairly low groundwater, twenty feet or deeper. It's fairly porous. I think the aquifer report also shows that the groundwater is fairly porous down into the aquifer at a reasonable rate. So anything that happens at the surface level is expected to eventually make it down into the groundwater and then into the aquifer eventually. So my question to you is, how is that drainage being handled across the, the site in between the buildings? Certainly, there's going to be some sheet flow or some drainage infrastructure into that basin, but are we talking prairie, are we talking grassland, woodland, potentially inducement of new wetland in those spaces interior to the site?
Can you repeat the second part of that question? Sorry, it was like you went one way and then kind of spiraled into a opposite route.
Yeah, I pivoted on you. So, so we know that the groundwater is porous, right?
Right.
So not everything's going to, whatever's sheet flowed, is not necessarily all going to make it to the drainage basin, because it may be drawn down into the groundwater through whatever grass or prairie or other type of pervious portion of the site, whatever that ratio makeup is. What, what kind of green, I guess, infrastructure, what kind of vegetative infrastructure is going to be on the interior of the site, not just at the perimeter for the buffer?
Sure, okay. That, that's helpful. Thank you for clarifying. So the intent of anything, you know, from a stormwater ordinance standpoint, that the county has set up, or any municipality has, is that any impervious cover has to go to a drainage basin for water quality measures. So there is, you know, minimal ability outside of where our connections connect to Chicago Trail, for example, that we would be directly discharging to a green space that's not a detention basin. So when you talk about sheet flow, that usually goes to an underground stormwater system that, that carries it over to those basins. The water quality measures are there, whether it's a structure with an aquasol to remove TSS, or, you know, a proposed, you know, low-lying wetlands to help treat that water before it goes into the, into the water table. You are correct, based on the, the water table number that was provided earlier. Obviously, a geotechnical engineer would help with that, but that water table is fairly low. We, this, these basins would likely be considered infiltration basins, as long as the infiltration tests come back positively on that. So you would see minimal infrastructure tying to whether it is that ditch or another location. That's pretty common around this area with the sandy soils that are, that are present, and is, you know, not a, not an uncommon thing to see. In terms of green, greenery within the campus, it really depends on what the developer wants to do. Some like more, some like less. You know, your, your foliage may depend on the generators themselves, trees and leaves in the fall don't really mix with exhaust fans and all of that, so you'll likely see less landscaping closer to the buildings to protect the mechanical equipment and the air intake areas, and then more as you kind of spread out and you get closer to that secured perimeter, if that helps answer your question.
It does. So largely, any kind of groundwater penetration from the site within those vegetative areas would be incidental. It's not sheet flow.
Correct.
The best management practices for handling the stormwater within the basins itself is to manage and handle that, that stormwater quality for testing and separation of sediment and other potential contaminants that, that could be broached on the site, right?
Yep.
One of the things that was shown, and, and I've got a little bit of background in this, but I don't feign to be an expert-
It does show.
Oh, thanks. That I am or that I'm not. No, don't answer that. One of the questions that I was asked that didn't strike a bell with me from my professional experience is that, you know, the forever plastics are part of those drainage basins and maybe linings or other things that get into them. In, in your professional experience, is that accurate, or is that maybe more incidental to, like, roadway infrastructure and the kind of things that get into storm systems that way?
It's a little bit of a loaded question. I'm not an expert on, on forever plastics. There are, if, if, usually in a high-water table area, you can use impervious liners, which can be plastic or bentonite clay layer for stormwater. But in terms of plastic getting into storm systems and all of that, that can come from a variety of different things. It can come from littering, it can come from the infrastructure that's installed, so I don't think I have the expertise to be able to answer for factual that, where microplastics may come from and how it may impact.
But typically not, some kind of a plastic lining of the basin itself?
No, you, I mean, for an infiltration basin, like what we would likely propose here, again, pending geotechnical recommendations, you can't have a plastic liner, because water can't flow through a plastic liner. Thank you.
But Mr. Deane, I think, Mr. Tanner probably understood you, what is TSS? You mentioned that some of us here aren't-
Yeah. And it was a positive, by the way, not the negative side of that. TSS stands for total suspended solids. So it's basically, you know, microplastics is a good example of this, is that in your stormwater from your asphalt, your runoff and all of that, you may see some level of, you know, I'll call it microscopic, but really small solids, whether it's microscopic pieces of the asphalt popping off, microplastic, whatever it is. So the Indiana Department of Environmental Management and the county have a requirement for what level of TSS removal needs to be done, and this can be done through, you know, installed wetlands, in, inside manholes, you can install aquasol devices that basically allow the solids, it's basically allowing the solids to settle in a set area and then be maintained as part of a long-term maintenance agreement for the property. So it's not a county-specific thing, it is statewide and nationwide to help, help reduce that from, from a development like this. And any development at all, could be residential, commercial, it does not, it's always, it's always a requirement for, for stormwater detention.
Sounds good. Good to know. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Deane? Mr. Schutzle?
Mr. Deane, I'll ask you a question I asked Mr. Dickinson, and he said this project's very unique for his company. Have you worked with other data center companies, and are there other companies that are working on setbacks like this and, and land that would, huge buffers of land? Are you aware of other projects similar to this, or is this just totally unique?
I think, I think about it, there is a commonality in the industry that I've seen, that there is a desire to maximize sites and put as much infrastructure on sites as possible to allocate for the power that is able to be provided to a site. I think anything related to additional setbacks or things that I'll say above and beyond is a site-by-site basis and is something that is coordinated with the local municipalities. But if you look at, you know, other campuses around the country, I think the, the level of, of commitments and setbacks and stuff would go typically above and beyond what, what you see in really any industry. I mean, it doesn't have to be data center specific, it could be spec industrial as well, just the industrial market.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question? Mr. Rotten?
Yeah. You know, Brandon started touching upon water usage, but he was covering a lot of material, and I think we got to other topics, so I'd like to go right back to water usage.
Sure.
And it sounds like, you know, there's several options. Could bring in water from New Carlisle, which would be treated potable water. I don't know if that makes sense for heat management. Mentioned an open source system where you'd bring in, I don't know if you could bring in the groundwater, transfer heat to it, and then just release it out into the ground or in the ditch. I think there's a lot of environmental concerns for that. Brandon mentioned, specifically emphasizing closed loop as an option, where you, you have a quantity of water, you put it within a looping system that takes the heat out of the building and then brings it outside the building. So it would be onsite somewhere. So is that like a, a ground loop system that would take up, like a field that would take up acreage onsite, where all that heat would be released into the ground?
So I want to, I do want to caveat my answer here with I am not a mechanical engineer. I am a civil engineer, so my expertise in this area is a bit limited. But the, the answer is generally no. There's not a onsite grid where the heat is taken. The, I'm trying to, you know, the, the closed-loop system, to my knowledge, is a, an ability for heat to go into, like the liquid to cool the, the, the data racks in the building, and then hot water would go to a, you know, a specific area of the building that is designated for cooling, similar to a water running in your air conditioner. And then that water is cooled down, run back through the system, the heat comes, it cools the, the data racks, and it continues the cycle. So it is not an, it's a closed-loop system, because the water is not evaporating in the pipes, or outside the pipes. It is continuously running in a heat, you know, a heat exchange-
Yeah.
-that's within the building. But again, I'm not a, a full expert in that, but that's my understanding of the, of the closed-loop process.
Sure. Well, it turns out I'm a mechanical engineer, so I don't want to get too deep in the details right now. Perhaps this is something that we could, you know, revisit at a future meeting, because this is not meant to be the final meeting. This is more of a preliminary committee meeting. But I, I do think that there's a lot of concerns about water usage contaminating the area, depleting the water, the area, and I just think that this is a common problem with any development. I think this could be addressed, addressed a little bit better with, with this project to reassure the community. Now, another question is traffic, okay? So I, I, I agree with Brandon. I think this is a, a reasonable site plan that shows responsible development, that shows respect for the community. However, you're, you're putting, you're proposing this project right in the middle of an area or right on the side of an area where there has been explosive development, right? That's, that's overwhelming the community. So we read, I read news articles all the time about the, the traffic problems in that area, maybe farther to the south. Okay, so now, if we're looking at another huge project, now we're going to have traffic problems on the, the north side of that area. I don't know if you'd be able to go between New Carlisle South Bend. So here's a chance to, to, to address how, how that currently is and how it could be managed going forward.
Yeah. I was going to say, that was another area of concern that we saw, based on Amazon, and what that would do, and we have United Consulting here tonight, that we've actually brought on board to address these concerns and give the council updates on some of their research and findings.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yeah, I'm Andy Allison with United Consulting. Our office is at eight four four zero Allison Point Boulevard in Indianapolis, Indianapolis, Indiana.
Your last name's Allison, is that correct?
Yep, A-L-L-I-S-O-N.
Eighty four four Allison Boulevard?
Correct.
Okay. Easy. Thank you. What, what do you want to bring us up to speed on, in terms of traffic analysis?
So, so our firm is contracted by the developer to take a look at the traffic impact caused by this development. So we have, we'll be looking at three different scenarios. We'll be looking at the existing traffic, we'll be looking at the construction traffic during, during construction of the buildings, and we'll be looking at post-construction as well. So that would be for, like, employees or people who regularly are entering the site. Currently, our, our project is, to give you an update, we've collected the traffic data, the existing traffic data out there. So our next step now is to start plugging this into our system here, to start evaluating that. We will be basing our, our construction information based off of what the developer is saying, how they're going to phase this out, and how they're going to build, how many they're going to build, and how quickly they're going to build. So that's going to make, we're going to create some assumptions for our construction-generated traffic based off of that. And then our post-construction traffic, we are using the ITE Trip Generation Manual, that is the, the national standard for trip generation. So we, a data center, for instance, creates an X number of, of trips generated. We'll, we'll be implementing that into our post-construction analysis. And as we step through this, again, we haven't gone through the analysis yet to the point where we can present findings, but we can say that, you know, as we find any challenged intersections created by this project, we will be working with the developer and the county to mitigate those, those challenges, to help ensure that traffic delays aren't reaching an unacceptable level. So this is, again, just an example that the, the developer is taking an extra measure here to help take care and ensure that traffic is not, is not going to be an issue.
Have you guys worked with Endot before?
Yes, yes, we do.
Because you have, you know, US twenty's on the south end of this proposed rezoning.
Correct.
So I would imagine Endot would be a player in this, too.
Yes, if, if there is a proposed traffic change on US twenty, we would have to bring Endot into this to get thereby in as well. Correct.
What does that mean, a proposed traffic change?
So i- if, if we would like to add additional pavement or something to help facilitate turning movements onto or off of US twenty, Endot would like to, you know, have a say in the matter. And again, we would evaluate alternatives to try and, to try and find the right solution to make sure that traffic is not being delayed too far there. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Did Mr. Allison answer your question? Did Mr. Allison answer your question, Mr. Rotten? Or get you where you were heading?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Or Mr. Allison? Hearing none, I would move back to Mr. Dickinson if there's any final questions.
And I guess maybe, Andy, can you confirm for me? Even though they're near each other generally in approximate way, the approach traffic for this development would not be the same traffic and approach patterns that Amazon would see. So you would have Amazon coming offline and being done on its corridor about 18 months from now. So you wouldn't have conflicting and, conflicting and compounding traffic patterns between Amazon and this project. Is that correct?
Yes, that very well said there, Brandon. So this project, again, is north of US 20 as stated, and the Amazon and the rest of the IEC corridor is kind of sandwiched between State Road Two and US 20 there. So our anticipation there is that a lot of that traffic that is in that developing area is using State Road Two. You may see an increase in traffic out there. But a lot of the traffic for construction for this development and for the post-construction as well would likely utilize US 20 or perhaps Chicago Trail, which is not seeing as much impact from those developments right now.
I've got a question for Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. What traffic study has been done over there by Chicago Trail and 20? Has there been any studies over there? I mean, weren't there counters? Do you know anything about that?
It would not have been our firm that had done them if they were done.
Is that MACOG, Mr. Dickinson? Or do you know anything about that? I mean?
Mr. Shalio shaking his head yes in the back.
There has been? I mean, I just can't imagine the traffic that's out there now. Then you go on top of it. And I know what you just said, Mr. Dickinson, the compound, I mean, you're saying that Amazon's ending and you would be starting with, I mean, the traffic's a nightmare out there now. I just can't even.
Would the construction schedules inflict? Would they?
Yeah. So our understanding, and obviously we don't have Amazon's full-blown timelines here, but looking at where they are in the project and looking what we would begin construction, we would kind of be two ships in the night situation. They would be wrapping up and kind of descaling that area, and we would be north of it. And so you wouldn't have conflicting and compounding traffic patterns where I know the concern is, well, if there's two data centers that are being developed, that means traffic is going to be twice as bad. And that is a linear assumption that is not actually true because spatially, we're not in the same place. And from a timeline perspective, we're also not in the same place. They would be ending as we would be ramping up. And then I'll let Mr. Shalio speak to the other.
Sorry. Bill Shalio, Economic Development. Sky Matters jumped offline because he didn't want to get sucked into these questions tonight. So he said, Bill, take care of it for me. MACOG has been working with us as a huge partner over the last year, year and a half, doing all sorts of traffic counting for us, knowing that we're going to have issues in this whole area, trying to make sure our traffic counts are up. Traffic counting has also been done on US 20 here recently because there are two state projects that will happen, US 20 in Tulip and US 20 in Smilax. So those are roadway improvements that will have to be done as part of the interchange project. The county is part of those projects, those projects also, two projects on State Road Two, two in Tulip and two in Timothy in addition to the interchange. So there's a whole bunch of traffic counting going on, a whole bunch of traffic modeling going on. As it was stated, there are a lot of projects happening right now, infrastructure-wise, in the, I'd say the central core. We have Edison Road closed. Smilax has been closed for periods. All of those roads will be open and operational by the time this project happens and this construction starts. So a lot more mobility in the corridor. The northern campus, the SBN 100 campus, will be complete by the time that they get started. They've got two buildings left to build. So a lot of that construction traffic and those general contractors will be out of the area. GM still will be building, but a lot less traffic in that area. More of that traffic will be centered on State Road Two over the next several years as the southern campus continues to build out.
And the interchange is starting this fall?
Actually, it'll start March of next year. So.
So March of 2025?
Twenty twenty-six, and then it'll be completed by November 2027.
Okay.
Mr. Tanner, did you have a question?
It was going to be back for Mr. Dickinson.
Okay, Mr. Dickinson, okay. Any other questions for Mr. Shalio while he's here?
Diana, do you have a question? Just what, do you have an anticipated time when the Amazon will complete their?
So the northern campus should be complete by the end of 2026, as we understand it. So there's, there may still be some landscaping at, you know, some additional tree planting and stuff like that that'll have to go in. But the two big buildings that are being built right along Larison, you'll see those go under construction throughout the year and will be completed, I believe, by the end of 2026.
And then the south campus is still under construction after that?
Will be under construction for a period of time, as well as a number of infrastructure improvements on Strawberry, on Gordon Road, on the Frontage Road, a whole bunch of, and certainly the interchange. So work, we can do a lot, but we can't until the interchange is done, can't connect all the pieces together.
Any, Mr. Rotten?
I got a question for you, Bill.
Yeah.
All right. So New Carlyle, the city of New Carlyle passed a resolution recently opposing this development, this, I should say, opposing this rezoning. And my understanding is there was a economic agreement between the county and the city of New Carlyle where they would not oppose or don't have a right to oppose any rezoning that is within the IEC. However, if there would be anything, any rezoning outside of the IEC, that they would have a right to support or oppose that. Do I have my language correct? And how do you interpret their resolution?
Yeah. So I think the core developmental agreement that was passed back in 2020 actually had four parties. It had the town, the township, the county through the Board of Commissioners, and the county through the redevelopment commission. There are several provisions within it. A lot of those have been met to this point. There are some that have a longer runway for completion, things like that. And then there are some other items like the, the provisions for within the core development area and outside the core development area. So I think it's section nine or section 10 of the agreement allows for the town to have opposition to projects outside the core development area. And again, I think one of the challenges with the IEC is the IEC is a little bit more amorphic. So there's the core development area, that's the, it used to be 2620, but then we added the 640 acres south of State Road Two. So it's a little more than 3,000 acres. But the IEC is really kind of a broader area, so to speak. So Caris Reals outside of the core development area would be considered part of the IEC. International Motors Proving Grounds within the IEC. I mean, they actually use IEC in a lot of their materials. So there, the IEC is broader than just that core development area box. Actually, when the IEC started, heck, it was 22,800 acres. And, you know, those that were involved back in 2017, 2018, 2019, on a council level, when we started that, the IEC was huge, and it's been shrunk down to a much more manageable area. So I think the town certainly was within its rights to do what it did, and we certainly understand that. The town does have a water service agreement, however, and that water service agreement is a partnership between the county and the town, that they will provide service to areas outside of that core development area and areas within the water service area agreement. So while they may have opposition to development outside the core, they have an obligation to provide water service in the water service area agreement. So it is kind of a push-pull, so to speak, but we certainly understand why they did what they did, and that's certainly their determination.
So is this rezoning project in or outside of the core development area?
It is outside the core development area. It is outside the New Carlyle Economic Development Area. It is adjacent to the New Carlyle Economic Development Area, but outside the area. But I would say, again, as the project manager for the IEC, it's within the IEC, the larger IEC.
Okay. Thank you for your response.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Shalio? Ms. Drake, Mrs. Drake?
So is the 32 or so shells that Amazon is doing, is that it? Or could there be more?
So I think we don't know what the final shell count is until they get a determination on their wetland permit. They've applied to eliminate a wetland on the area, I think it was a 10-acre wetland. That will depend on how many shells they ultimately build on site. So we don't, we don't have a final count, nor do they, until they know what the status of that permit is.
Is that the only area that they could expand?
I mean, at this point in time, they own much more land outside of the area. So, I mean, but it really, it boils down to two things. It would boil down to the availability of power and extension of power to those additional shells, and then, and then just other factors as far as development and how they would lay them out. So is there the potential? I would say right now. Now, what I would tell you from a clarity standpoint, when you approved the tax abatement and incentives, you approved incentives on the northern campus, so SBN 100, and incentives for SBN 201 and 210, which is the southern campus. So the incentives as they exist today only relate to those two campus sites. If they were to come back and ask for more buildings on a new site, they'd have to come through an incentive process.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Mr. Shalio? All right. We'll move back to Mr. Dickinson?
Thank you. And then I was going to just maybe clarify a statement about the traffic. I know that I said it would be like two ships in the night. I wanted, I don't want to downplay, I'm sure there will be impact. I'm sure that some people will have a level of impact on their drive that they don't like. Our goal is to minimize and mitigate those, their open communication with the St. Joseph Engineering Department, police, sheriff's offices, et cetera, and coordinate those and come up with plans months in advance of construction starting versus trying to build the plane in mid-flight. So we're going to be very intentional about coming up with those traffic patterns and plans between our consultants and stakeholders with the county, town, and township.
Thank you. Mr. Tanner, you were patiently waiting?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Dickinson, you've already listed a number of written commitments that the developer that you represent is prepared to put pen to paper and sign off on today. One of the things that I think this wouldn't satisfy everybody, it may not even satisfy a majority, I have no idea. But one of the ideas that was presented recently is this idea of conserving as much green space as possible, maybe even dedicating or expanding green space to offset the amount of impervious pavement. Much to my question for the representative from Kinley Horn, and just from an engineering concept as a whole, you've alluded to these significant buffers. And I know there's been discussion about multi-user recreational trail being a component of that, along Chicago Trail. So a multi-use recreational trail that parallels that. I don't know where that's at in any kind of development or negotiation because obviously you've got to get through the rezoning first. But to that end, those kinds of assets at least perceptively become public resources, or at least publicly accessible resources. And to that end, would you and the developer be willing to consider the concept of dedicating some of these buffer zones as conservation easements? I know there may be some, you know, tax deferment benefits to that for the corporation, but also some confidence building in the community as to how that land, those uses are conserved for the, I guess I'll broadly term, the public good.
Yeah. Okay. So it's a great question and a great point. So I think there's two things there. One, as far as public assets go, one of, and this is more brainstorming, just kind of showing the openness and willingness to be creative. We discussed with the 250 acres that we have no use for, that we plan to give back to a civic entity, there being an opportunity to explore regional trail connectivity, bike paths, to increase usage and experience on Chicago Trail. If that road could be widened to accommodate road, additional roadway, dedicating additional land to make that happen. Open to all of those concepts. As far as specific conservation concepts, I would say that we're also open to exploring those and seeing where they can fit and where they make sense. Again, our site plan is intentional. It is not final, and we remain open to working collaboratively with the county to create kind of a best-in-class site that really, again, to reiterate this, we feel can then be picked up and handed to the next industrial developer in St. Joseph County, and you guys are able to say, this is, this is the minimum. This is the expectation if you want to develop in St. Joseph County. So yeah, open to all of those concepts.
And I realize, you know, kind of almost apologetically to everybody that's a part of this conversation. We talk a lot about the data center and the conceptual site plan of the data center and these commitments. And some, to some degree, it's putting the cart before the horse, right? Because the site plan is not going to be final unless the rezoning is approved. The commitments aren't there unless the rezoning is approved. The true scale of the development and the financial or community benefit incentives won't be formally negotiated until the rezoning, if it's approved. There are a lot of things there that we're getting ahead of it because I think, and we've taken this months-long process to slowly parse through this, through the requested delays or returning to committee and things like that. But what it comes down to is a data center is the catalyst for a rezoning for a site that you've identified as being well-suited for that development that we're challenged to convey or contrast it against the five or so parameters that the state guides us to use for rezoning. One of those parameters is preferred use of public good. And something that hasn't been discussed yet is jobs. The public good that could come of this rezoning and a data center being developed is the creation of additional jobs. So would you give us a little bit of a highlight of what that level of investment or creation of jobs, what type of jobs, what kind of pay scale those jobs would be at within the development that's proposed?
Yeah, absolutely. And agree. I've said this is not your grandfather's rezone. The way that rezoning used to work was very compartmentalized. And the world that we live in today, there are five moving parts that all interconnect with a project and a rezone. So we're getting ahead of ourselves to a degree, but I think we're trying to proactively show the county and the community that we are thinking about things and we are trying to put things in place so that when it is time to take this to a vote, again, the county knows the deal it's bargaining for as it relates to site development. And part of that is jobs. So we anticipate approximately two, about, I'll be conservative, I'll say probably 150 per phase. So that would be 300 total once both phases are completed, jobs. And those jobs would be approximately north of 100,000. Those are going to be software jobs, tech jobs, et cetera, that I think that South Bend and its educational groups between Ivy Tech, Notre Dame, IU, Purdue Northwest are uniquely positioned to fill and handle. I also know that whatever Amazon is paying, because they're going to be very similar jobs, that will probably set the market to a degree. So I would say that those salaries will come in alongside what Amazon has. And if I'm not mistaken, as part of its economic development agreement, Amazon had to agree to a certain percentage of median county income. I think it's like 125% or something like that. So you would see, you would see these jobs raised to that salary level because that's what the market would be for this area and those types of jobs.
And that's the permanent jobs that you're identifying. We've heard numbers around 400, but I appreciate the conservative estimate of 300 between the two phases. I think we should be prudent with those numbers that we actually say publicly. But, and you also mentioned what I'll call degreed jobs. But would there also be technical jobs that are not necessarily degreed? Not just construction trade jobs, but interior trade jobs that maintain the system from a mechanical, industrial maintenance level. Splicing of fiber is something that I think we've heard Amazon refer to.
Yeah, no, another great question. So again, when we look at the pool of institutions that the greater South Bend area has, I think that that's probably where that that's probably where a lot of the Ivy Tech-type jobs and backgrounds would be able to fill. We've talked about, again, it's just, it's brainstorming, but we've talked about reaching out to Ivy Tech and even trying to kind of create a program and a path for those types of jobs that residents could take at Ivy Tech to kind of lead them into this job corridor. Because again, it does not appear that St. Joseph County is, is going to be, you know, let me put it this way, there is a lot of opportunity for those types of jobs in St. Joseph County due to the infrastructure that exists today. So I think there's an effort to maximize that and to create jobs, again, at a number of income levels and degrees, whether that be Ivy Tech, Notre Dame, IU South Bend, Purdue Northwest, et cetera. So we see it as a multi-tiered job creation.
Thank you.
Mrs. Drake.
So these jobs that you're talking about that are 100,000 or up, are those jobs people do on-site, or could those jobs be done in Texas?
That's a great question. I will, I will get a better answer for you on that. When we talk about job creation, traditionally in Indiana, we talk about jobs that are created and dollars that stay in Indiana. So that would be, that would be how I understand it. I will go back and confirm, though, that we're not going to be building a project and then 80% of those people that are hired to those great jobs are remote out of Dallas. I, I understand that, and that would not be in the, in the vein of what we're trying to, in the vein of what we're trying to articulate here is job creation.
Anybody else for a question from Mr. Dickinson? Did you have one, Joe?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Mr. Fig?
I wasn't going to say anything tonight. I'm not on this committee, but I wanted to take it all in like you folks have listened to this tonight. But there is one thing I wanted to ask you, and I know this is, might be a pretty strong question. Would you, would your company, who you represent, be interested, or would they do a written commitment that they would not ask us for a tax abatement? I know that's putting you on the spot.
I would say, yeah. Okay. Yeah is not my answer. Yeah, I'm processing the question. I think at this point, again, understanding that all of these are intertwined, economics, job creation, rezone, everything has a role in kind of this watch where all the gears turn each other. I think today, at this state, at this stage, I don't know that they would be ready to do that. I would also say that oftentimes, and this, this is more of an economic development part of the conversation, which we're not really getting into, but I'll, I'll just foreshadow it, that oftentimes, an abatement within an economic development agreement with a developer can actually create more dollars upfront for a community. So you can, I always use the analogy of, you know, when you win the lottery, you can either take the annuity or you can take, you know, cash upfront. And so with economic development agreements throughout Indiana, you often see these with solar and renewable projects, there will be some sort of abatement. But the reason that there is an abatement is so that the community has more fungible tax dollars to use upfront in the immediate years versus waiting, you know, 25 years for those tax dollars to slowly trickle in over time. So I would say that that would be part of the consideration, that it wouldn't just be, we need an abatement, it would more so be, there's a way to create tax revenues, I would say accelerated tax revenues through the developer, through an economic development agreement that would not otherwise be available.
Thank you. Okay.
Yes. Could you explain a little bit more about that economic development agreement upfront and what that would involve?
I can, I can discuss it conceptually.
Okay.
And, and again.
Or possibly involve.
Yeah. Not necessarily specific to this, this project, but again, we're trying to be very creative and, and open-minded and approaching the fiscal ramifications of this with the county. Usually when you have a project and a development, the taxes off of the project come in as dictated by statutory language. It gets split up and it goes out, and you just pay your taxes twice a year. When you, because that's what the law says. But you can contract yourself into a different system. So an economic development agreement then turns into a contract between, and it depends on the county structure, sometimes it's between the county commissioners, sometimes it's between the county council, sometimes it's with both, where it is negotiated and, and put together that there will be an abatement, but a number of those dollars that are abated are given back to the community, the, the county in this, in this situation, since we're in unincorporated St. Joseph County, at an escalated rate. So there would be more, there would be more fungible tax dollars for the county to utilize in areas it deems most necessary versus, and I know a lot of counties deal with jails, and I, I hope I'm not touching on a sensitive subject, it's 50-50 proposition, but oftentimes counties are faced with, we need to build a jail, and now that jail is going to take up a ton of our tax revenue over the course of the next four years, and so we can't do roads, we can't do any other improvements, all of our money has to go towards getting this jail set up because statutorily, counties have to have a jail. And so what you can do with an economic development agreement is you can negotiate and contract with the developer to say the developer's going to provide dollars upfront in exchange for an abatement, and a number of those dollars will be front-loaded and go back to the community. And therefore, there is now a, we'll call it a 15-year, there's a 15-year stream of revenue that is monetized and given back to the county within five years. And so now you've solved your funding problem for a jail, and then the money that you would have had to dedicate to a jail, for instance, now can go back to parks, roads, infrastructure improvements, et cetera. And that then empowers the local elected officials and leadership to determine what is the most immediate and necessary needs for these dollars that our county is facing and not having to try to figure out a problem that is four years out, which can devastate a budget on some of those higher infrastructure project costs like a jail. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dickinson? Mr. Dickinson, I asked you, last month when we allowed you a delay, you explained that you had not gotten with the town of Carrollisle as of that time. Since then, have you guys talked to the town of Carrollisle? Can you report back? And we obviously got a resolution from them, but were you guys able to achieve a meeting with them?
We were. We, we did have a meeting. It was an executive session meeting, I believe that was the 16th of October. It was a, it was a positive meeting. At the meeting, it was explained to the developer and I that the town was not ready to necessarily list the commitments that it would like to see, but that conversations would continue in that vein, and that it would be likely that someone from the town would present that articulation of, of status at this meeting. We then found out from their legal counsel that they apparently went in the opposite direction after telling us that was kind of the plan, and passed a resolution stating that they are not in support of the project. That was news to us and a surprise to us, and the only reason we found out is we asked if we could have a copy of what they were preparing to state today for today's meeting. So we took that as the, the town is no longer interested in working with us on, on the project, that they stand against it in whatever form and shape it may take. And so while we, while we are disappointed in that, we stand by our word with what we said we would do with the county and have the county step into the town's shoes for those commitments that we articulated, the town that we would be willing to make.
Okay. Thank you. I had a question for John Murphy, our auditor. John, it was alluded to earlier in this conversation that the upcoming projects going online, General Motors, Samsung SDI, Amazon Web Services, and Microsoft, when they go online, that the tax dollars generated from those projects alone will get us through our $8 million problem in 2028. Would you agree with that assessment?
Not necessarily. I mean, it depends on if, whether they're in the TIF district, or, you know, if they went all to the general fund, I probably would be more agreeable, thinking that would happen. But I'm not sure that, that will solve all the problems. We're not, though, you know, we are fiscally solvent, and we're not going to go bankrupt in 2028 or anytime soon, so.
Well, we've, we've done a good job at creating the cash reserves that we have and been fiscally responsible.
Right. So we'll weather the storm, for sure.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I had. I believe anybody else has any last questions before we consider this measure? If not, I don't need our motion.
Motion to send unfavorably.
We have a motion?
Mark, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
This, so this is a land use planning committee, and, you know, I love considering the details of, of water use and electrical use and traffic and zoning. Issues of, you know, written commitments and taxes and future funding for schools and jails are kind of harder to, to envision right now. I mean, should we be limiting our consideration more to the land, the land use details?
I'll, I'll answer your question. I mean, I, I thought you had something to ask pertaining to Ms. Drake's motion, but I, I think what we have before is a rezoning petition tonight, and I think anything more than that would be something that we would have a say in negotiating if, if, if it got passed, if the zoning got passed. I think we, with the economic development team and the commissioners, would have a say, if it got passed at our future council meeting.
Yeah.
I think, I think those are important things to talk about. But I do have a motion on the floor I need to act on.
Yeah.
If there's a second to it.
I would like to second Ms. Drake's motion to forward unfavorably to the full council.
Do we have a motion, a second on the floor? Any further discussion? If not, we will take a vote on sending Bill 4225 to the full council unfavorably.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I think the petitioners have done a really good job of addressing a lot of questions. I don't think, you, I mean, you've been very persuasive. And I think the issue is, our community here said yes early on to a data center, and there's, there are pluses and minuses, but there's still a lot of unknowns. And so even the Braun administration, which is pushing these data centers, says, in the end, it's up to the communities. And I think we've heard more loudly than most other issues we've had, that our community is saying, hold up, wait, wait a while, let us catch up right now. And so that's why I'm saying no, right now, at least. I, I don't envision our council saying yes in the end, maybe we, maybe we will, but I don't want us to also give the false impression that we're for it because I think, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but my impression is if we're listening to the people, it's a resounding no.
Okay. We're going to call for the vote. The motion is to send it with an unfavorable recommendation, Bill 4225. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We'll do a hand count, I think, just to make sure. Those who are in favor of 4225 going unfavorably, please raise your hands. I have Amy, Dan, and Andy. Those who are opposed? Diana, myself. Motion carries three to two. That Bill 4225 will go to the council unfavorably. Just the petitioner, just so you know, that does not mean that's the final vote, that is just the recommendation from this committee.
Yes, thank you. And if there's anything that we can prepare ahead of the November 12th meeting, please do let us know so that we can come prepared to answer any additional questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my committee. Mr. Chairman? Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. We'll move on now to Bill's return to committee, Budget Administration Committee, Mr. Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've got Bill Number 60-25, the Community Investment Ordinance, that is related to an amendment to our Tax Abatement Ordinance. I may wait a moment.
That's fine. Folks, if you could please take your discussion outside of the main chamber, that would be helpful to us. Thank you.
I appreciate that. And for everybody being respectful on their way out, thank you. In our August meeting, August public hearing, this was read or put into the record on first reading. Since then, there's been outreach by members of the community, community stakeholders, further discussion with representatives such as Jeff Ray with the South Bend Regional Chamber, members of the economic development team, interested members of our community who have spoken about these issues in the past, and coordination among the, the cosponsors. I believe most, if not all, of those concerns that were discussed among those individuals have either been addressed or clarified with the amendments that were circulated via email and then in printed packets in front of everybody this evening. I'll outline those items. Section 3502 was our definitions. There was a typographical error resolved within the local company definition. It, it was merely a misphrasing of St. Joseph County itself. 3504 subsection A2, there was some superfluous language regarding specific type of costs which could be incurred by the county. This is historic language that's been in the Tax Abatement Ordinance for, let's just say, the dawn of time, but it did speak to municipal utility costs. The county is not responsible for managing or operating any municipal utilities, so although that could theoretically be a cost associated with an abatement process, that superfluous language was removed to avoid any confusion with who manages what. 3504 subsection A3, language was updated for clarity by suggestion of our council attorney, but also in discussion with the economic development team, who recommended the removal of a formal percentage qualifier within that language, as well as, there was just a little bit of redundancy in the verbiage that was removed. 3504A subsection 4, this is a new subsection, but it's actually reflective of language that's in the existing ordinance that identifies a poverty wage and minimum wage thresholds. That base language for those thresholds unfortunately was overlooked. It was assumed to have been part of the scoring system that was largely removed from this tax abatement amendment that's before us. So it's a reintroduction of that language with some modernized, easier-to-understand thresholds that actually mimics tax abatement commitments that have been made to the county in recent petitions. There was also some discussion about inclusion of median income as a better measure compared to average salaries. However, Indiana state law and Indiana code limits the consideration to averages. So while I think it was well-intended that some of the earlier draft language that was considered and discussed, shared with economic development, Mr. Ray with the chamber and the cosponsors, our council attorney, I think rightfully identified, as well as the economic development team, had identified, not necessarily the hurdle, but another data point that would be added difficulty to administer, and since it didn't align with Indiana code language, it was better to clean that up. Because A4 was a new section, it meant that the previous A4 and A5 subsections were renumbered to five and six. 3520 subsection 7, subsection 6 actually included some clarifying language that identifying individual information would be withheld from the reporting that organizations were required to do as part of their abatement compliance. So that was extended beyond just the company employee records that were submitted for reporting. That, that same protection or, or codified protection was extended to the contractors that were involved in the project too, in subsection 7. I think a very reasonable suggestion by the I think a very reasonable suggestion by, um, the South Bend Regional Chamber. Um, in sections 3521 and 3530, uh, both relate to compliance and what used to be called fines or fine, um, uh, thanks to our council attorney for identifying that there is no use of the word fine or a fine schedule identified within either Indiana code or anywhere else in our ordinances. So that language was replaced with penalty or penalties, as well as some clarification, just reinforcing that, uh, we have the ability to, um, let me make sure I've got the language correct here. Uh, the abatement may be reduced, suspended, or terminated by the council as, uh, the range of those penalties that we have the power to enforce. And then in general, um, minor scrivener's errors, like, uh, an errant plus sign in one of the drafts, uh, or, or an errant period, may have been updated in the, in the, uh, ordinance and the exhibits that were, uh, circulated. Those were cleaned up, as well as the unfortunate use of find and replace in Microsoft Word meant that the word petitioner was substituted everywhere that the word applicant had previously existed, and even in these sections that were being removed, we had new quote-unquote petitioner language introduced that needed to be removed. So by and large, these, um, amendments are cleanup, conciseness, consistency, um, type of changes uh, in the time that has passed since this was originally filed, though it, it is substantive that some of this language improves the privacy, uh, concerns that were identified, um, the, um, accuracy of some of the, the statements such as the definition, and then also, um, reintroducing some of that base language that I think is critical for, uh, setting a, uh, expectation of what kind of salaries we would consider qualifying uh, within the ordinance itself, uh, or with a petition itself, uh, for a tax abatement consideration. Um, that's a, that's a broad reading of the bullet points that were circulated to everybody in the council today. Exhibit A and Exhibit B, uh, that exist as part of the Tax Abatement Ordinance that's proposed have also been circulated and exist in the printed format in front of everybody, um, and that consists of those, uh, amendments that were just identified. Um, I'd be willing to open it up to any of the cosponsors who want to add any additional comment.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes, Councilwoman Drake?
So, we just got these changes in the last 24 hours, some today. I'm wondering, because of the way our meeting is set for next, our next public meeting when this would come up, we already anticipate that it's going to be very, um, long and focused on the data center, and this to me is something that we need to vet and talk through. I'm wondering if we should hold this until our next committee meeting, so that it falls on the next public meeting?
I would certainly entertain that thought. Um, if I may make a honest counterpoint to it, is, a lot of the people who I believe will attend that meeting, while it will certainly be a long meeting by all appearances, would be the same kind of individuals who are interested in how we handle tax abatements in the community too. So while we have that captive audience, it, it may actually be arguably the best time to talk about this, even if it is the longest time in which we discuss it. That said, I, I, I won't dictate what the will of the, uh, committee is on making a motion to that extent.
I'll make that motion. I'd like to delay it also. I just think this data center issue is going to be so, such a long night. I'm kind of fatigued right now, to be honest, looking at this. So I'd like to have more time looking at it myself, uh, and then get past, you know, November 13th, or 12th, whatever the day, what's it, whatever the data center comes on.
I'll second that motion.
That is a motion and a second for holding it in committee?
Yes.
Just, just to clarify?
Are they on your-
Yeah, they're on. I'm, I'm on the committee. You are.
Yeah, you are.
Uh, yeah. I'd like to hold it in committee.
It's a motion and a second to hold this in committee. Um, th- those are the standing motions. Uh, all those on the committee, uh, who concur, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, seeing that that motion is a tie, um, I'll exercise the, uh, chair's responsibility to break that tie and say, um, aye, uh, to deny that motion.
Mr. Tanner, may I?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Shep.
I don't recall one time in the almost three years I've been on this council where we've delayed a motion because the next regular meeting is going to be a long meeting.
It's an exception to the rule.
We've, we have never done that.
Well, big deal.
We've never done it, and I'm just making that point, Joe, we've never done it, so you're trying to make an exception, but the, it would be a clear exception, that's my point. It would be a clear exception. We have never done that. That to me sounds lazy. I don't want to do that.
Uh, are there any further questions by the committee?
Well, yeah, I don't think it's lazy, so I, I disagree with your statement.
I, let's please refrain from the back and forth as it relates to the action that was already taken. Uh, could we refrain from that and, uh, contain ourselves to any further discussion that relates to questions about the amendments, the bill itself, or a motion for the next action? Uh, Mr. Katanzarite?
I just want to state that I supported not holding the committee only because, who knows what the 4225 is going to do by November? Could they ask for a delay? Could it be delayed to the December meeting? We might have both of them in December, I mean, is the potential, um, because they do have the timeline of December, um, before that has to be acted upon by us. Uh, question, Ryan, on 3520. I thought you said the chamber had asked for a change on 3520.7, item 7. Um, added in the language that was used in the prior subsection 6 for employees, noting that such privacy initiatives should be included for construction workers under 7. So, I think I understand this, in 7, um, payment of wage rates, residency, and employment status of construction workers, is that just limited to maybe zip codes as far as address?
No, it's-
Or residency, I'm sorry?
No, it's a great question. Um, subsection 6 relates to certified payrolls to document the payment of employee wage rates, uh, and then clarifies that identifying individual information should be withheld.
Okay.
That same language of identifying individual information should be withheld as part of that reporting is what was duplicated on subsection 7 as it relates to the certified payrolls and, and wage rates and residency for construction workers, as opposed to the employees that were mentioned in subsection 6.
So just to clarify that, so I understand it. Are you in agreement then that the residency of construction workers would be reported? That, like, something as simple as their zip code, or the town they're from?
Yeah, it's, it's identifying the person by their individual name and address would be withheld. Um, it, it's the obscuring of that information so that people can't be targeted-
Okay.
Uh, for an invasion of privacy.
That's what I'm hoping for, okay.
It also relates to the prior subsection 5, while it's not amended any further since the original filing. Uh, but, and, section 5 refers to the EEO1 report, um, that has been identified that, uh, companies who are under the purview of the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, um, must provide that report. Um, those are companies that by federal law are over 100 employees. Uh, in talking with, um, Economic Development, uh, Mr. Ray and, and others, that seemed like a reasonable threshold for that level of, uh, reporting, because there are enough employees at one of those organizations to naturally obfuscate their, uh, personal identity within that reporting. Um, but because, uh, those smaller employers, less than 100, they're, they're actually, um, uh, I guess, omitted from needing to provide that additional reporting. So those small employers, those particularly small businesses, are not burdened with that additional, uh, administrative overhead, so let's say it's a small, uh, construction subcontractor.
Mm-hmm.
They're not required to provide that extra level of reporting, uh, because it would naturally, um, implicate their employees in some of that, uh, reporting.
Okay, thank you.
So, really being mindful of individuals' privacy while still getting the significant data that the council needs for determining compliance, uh, with the tax abatement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions as it relates to the, uh, proposed ordinance or amendments? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to move favorably.
Just a point of reference, I thought we already had sent it forward favorably? The original time, we just held it in committee? I, I had shown that as a vote of three to two, it went favor-
So it, it was not held in committee, it was returned to committee?
Returned to committee?
So it actually does need another, uh, favorable, unfavorable, uh, no, no, uh, recommendation? So, uh, there's a motion on the floor to send favorably. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, there's a motion and a second to send favorably. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Just by show of hands, if we could just confirm, I, I heard it, but for the record, for those, uh, who may not be able to hear, uh, show of hands, those in favor of sending favorably? Got Mr. Shep and Mr. Katanzarite. Those opposed to sending favorably? Mr. Fig and Mr. Thomas. Um, I will, uh, exercise my, uh, responsibility to break that tie and send this favorably to the full council for consideration at our November 12th meeting. That's all I have. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. All right, there is, the Rules Committee has no agenda item to bring forward. We have no presentations. Anyone wish to discuss the budget? Any other business? Mr. Katanzarite?
Well, on the budget, did, I didn't know if John had anything to report to us on the budget? Now, we just passed it last month. I did get the email on Reddit that we had our State Board of Accounts audit performed by the company out of Indianapolis, and then we only had one finding. And that's, that's been corrected, John? The finding has-
It has, yeah. We're working with the Treasurer's Office. It's corrected. So we had no, no grant, single audit findings, no grant audit findings, so that was good.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Katanzarite. Any unfinished business?
I'd ask, John, did you have any budget items you want to discuss with us?
No, um, Abby's putting together the budget, the regular budget book, and she's, got that almost ready to send out to you guys. So probably later, um, later this week. I was going to say today, but I don't think that's-
Tonight? Is there an email?
It's on his desk, so, um-
A little bit of buck passing there.
Once he gives us a good old checkmark, we're good to go.
Sounds good.
Katanzarite?
Thank you.
Is that it?
I'm done.
All right, we are adjourned.